I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. A roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese. Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon. Johnson. Dakin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Six present, three absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the great God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Devin, would you note that Councilman Ammon arrived?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Just one or two small items are miscelline.
Under miscelline?
Yes.
Thank you. Any others? I would like to make a change to the scheduled hearings. We will move the scheduled hearing ordinance authorizing issuance of the $1,460,000 general obligation improvement bond to the right after the assessment hearing as compared to the last hearing that we have open. Consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And then we will open the hearing with the assessment hearing, 2012 Street and other improvements. Holly, would you talk to us about that? I will, at this point, open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Tonight we have our 2001 Street Improvement Assessment Hearing. There were handouts available over by the door. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to review and explain the proposed improvements and estimated costs and to obtain input from the interested parties. This will sound very similar to our improvement hearing. This is a map of our proposed projects. You can see the red is the reconstruction and the green is the overlay projects. The purple would be our miscellaneous, the orange is our paths, and then we have a couple of new construction areas. I'll be focusing on the reconstruction and the overlay today because those are the ones that are assessed. Here you can see the project schedule. Bids were opened on April 24th of 2012. There were three bidders for the A portion of the project and four bidders for the B portion of the project. The project was broken up into two phases, A and B, based on reconstruction and overlay. The improvement hearing is tonight, or was on March 5th. The assessment hearing is tonight, and we hope to begin construction, if all goes well, in July with the construction ending in November. Reconstruction is typically the removal of the bituminous, replacing curb and gutter where needed. Utilities is needed, certain stormwater improvements, grading, gravel base, tile, bituminous paving and turf establishment. A typical section for reconstruction is 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of bituminous base. Typically, we put on fabric if we need it, install tile lines. There are six streets included in this year's reconstruction portion for a total of .83 miles. And I'll briefly just go over each of the streets for our reconstruction. The first one would be Oak Lane from 7th Street to the east. The length of this is about 950 lineal feet. It was originally constructed in 1958. We do rate our streets in a scale of 1 to 100, 100 being the best. This street rated at a 10. MUC requested that the water main replacement be put in the schedule, and they requested that back in 2008. Public Works has been called numerous times to flush the sewer main, and televising reports show root infiltration, cracked tile and tile misalignment. The proposed section will be our typical section of 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of base. We propose to replace the 2-inch copper water main with 8-inch PVC water main and replace the 8-inch clay sanitary sewer with 8-inch PVC and reconnect all the services. The estimated cost for this street was about $222,500. The next one is Russell Street. Again, on a rate, this is at 686 lineal feet. Again, on a rating scale of 1 to 100, this rated at a 30. It was originally constructed in 1957 and had an overlay done in 1971. Currently, there is 6 inches of gravel and 1 and 1/2 inches of bituminous. Again, this was requested by Municipal Utilities for water main replacement back in 2008. 2010, we did a significant amount of pothole patching. Televising reports show root infiltration and tile misalignment. We will put the proposed 10-inch gravel section and 4 inches of base. We will add fabric, remove and replace all curb and gutter on this portion of the street. Then we'll be improving the drainage by adding 100 feet of storm sewer, replacing 4 inches, the 4-inch cast iron water main with 8-inch PVC and replacing the 8-inch sanitary, clay sanitary sewer with 8-inch PVC and reconnecting the services. The estimated cost on this project is $231,700 approximately. The next one is 14th Street southwest from Grace Avenue to Wilmer Avenue. The length of this piece is 686 lineal feet. It was originally constructed in 1963. It currently has about 6 and 1/2 inches of aggregate and 1 and 1/2 inches of bituminous. A rating on a scale of 1 to 100, this rated at a 25. Back in 2008, Municipal Utilities recommended that the water main be replaced as soon as possible. 2010, there was extensive potholing. It does require yearly patching in the spring and the fall. It has a very rough ride. Televising shows cracked and sagging tile. We will put in our typical section of 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of bituminous base, replace curb and gutter where needed. We will replace the 6-inch cast iron water main with 8-inch PVC and replace the 8-inch clay sanitary sewer with 8-inch PVC and reconnect all the services. Estimated cost for this project is around $206,300. The next one is Bernard Street from Becker Avenue to Litchfield Avenue. This is about 422 lineal feet. Originally constructed in 1937 with an overlay in 1970. Currently, it has 3 inches of aggregate base and an inch and 1/2 of bituminous. On a scale of 1 to 100, 100 being the best, this rated a 5. MUC requested water main replacement in 2008. We did a frost oil repair in 2008 and three frost oil repairs in 2011. Televising reports showed cracked and patched tile. We will replace it with our typical section, replace the 4-inch cast iron water main with 8-inch PVC and replace the 8-inch clay sanitary sewer with 8-inch PVC and reconnect the services. Estimated cost for this is around $157,800. Next is Elizabeth Avenue from Robert Street to 14th Street, and it's about 1,000 lineal feet. Originally constructed in 1986. This currently has 7 and 1/2 inches of base and 1 and 1/2 inches of bituminous. It has a rating of 40. Again, water main replacement was requested in 2008 by Municipal Utilities, and that portion was from Robert Street to 13th Street. Again, the televising report shows root infiltration, cracked tile and tile misalignment. We will replace it with our typical section of 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of bituminous, replace curb and gutter as needed and add fabric. Also, we would be replacing the 4-inch water main with 8-inch and replacing the 8-inch sanitary sewer from Robert Street to 13th Street with 8-inch PVC. Estimated cost is $291,300. And finally, the last reconstruction street is Royce Avenue from 1st to 4th Street. This has a rating of 65. It's about 633 lineal feet. It was originally constructed in 1912 and reconstructed in 1987. It does have 6 inches of base and 4 inches of bituminous. There is 150 feet of storm sewer from 3rd Street to the east. There is no water main and no sanitary sewer in this street. Our proposed section currently is for 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of bituminous. The estimated cost for the bituminous is $70,800. We also did a alternate bid on this portion of the street to do concrete from 1st to 3rd as a test site for concrete streets, and that will be discussed later on in the assessment hearing as to what the council chooses to do with that. And we'll move on to the overlay. Overlay consists of milling about an inch and 1/2 to 2 inches of the bituminous and removing and replacing curb and gutter where it's needed, correcting damaged area, and then paving back an inch and 1/2 to 2 inches of pavement. There are two segments included in this year's project, and they both are state aid streets. And it totals about .84 miles. The first one would be 5th Street southwest from Wilmer Avenue to Candy Ohio Avenue. This is about .34 miles. Originally constructed in 1983, it currently does have 11 inches of base and 6 inches of bituminous and a rating of 75. The estimated cost is $105,900. The reason for the reconstruction on this project, or not, excuse me, for the overlay on this project is primarily a maintenance-type activity. Typically, you see an overlay project in around the 20-year timeframe. This one has been 19 years since it was last constructed. The assessments on this project would be 19 twentieths of the assessable rate since it was just done 19 years ago. And we propose doing this street as a maintenance project to kind of maintain and keep the cost down for this project. 9th Street southwest, again, for the same reasons, this is another overlay project, and this is from 19th Avenue southwest to Wilmer Avenue. About .23 miles. Originally constructed in 1963 with a rating of 55, and we are proposing to do a mill and overlay and add a catch basin. The estimated cost of this is $161,841. This is the total estimated project cost. The total bid was $1.2 million. The property owners assessed would be about $596,000. And the city share for non-assessed footage, if I'm saying that correctly, is $621,889. The reconstruction cost per foot for the reconstruct is $67.17, and the overlay is $26.08. And I'll go to the comparison from last year. Last year, our reconstruction was $59 and, can you go back one slide, please? Thank you. Last year's reconstruction was $59.76, and this year we are at $67.17. I do realize that is a significant increase from last year. Part of the reason for that is the amount of assessable footage on the streets that were included in this year's project. We base our assessments on front footage or address footage and calculate our assessment rate based on that. So, that came up to $67.17 a foot. The overlay portion is $26.08, which is a small increase from last year's, which was $25.46. And then this slide, you can see the history from 2007. The next slide just gives you kind of a summary of our top six street expenses, which would include common excavation, concrete driveway replacement, Class 5 aggregate base, bituminous, the curb and gutter, and the bituminous wear course. And basically, the only decrease in costs was the bituminous base course from 2011 to 2012. We had an increase in our bituminous wear course and an increase in our concrete pavement replacement. So that you can kind of see the comparison for previous year's bids prices. And with, I think we may have skipped a slide quickly, but I'll just go through this. Just a reminder that the assessment schedule is full payment without interest is due on October 31st. Partial payments are allowed before October 31st, and the first payment is due May 15th of the following year. So, with that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Holly. Don't go too far away. I would like to open this up, and I might just remind the folks, if you signed up for the public forum to speak about the assessments, there's no need to wait. This is the time for you to speak up if you want to talk about the assessments. So, please, do I hear anything that anybody wants to talk about the assessments? Go ahead. Would you come up to the podium and?
Name and address.
Name and address.
My name is Mike Brown, and I'm here to speak about the Royce Avenue assessments. First of all, I'd like to thank the city, Holly and Curly, for lack of not knowing his first name. Were very proactive and came and met with us and explained what they were going to do and talked to us about our concerns, and we appreciate that. I appreciate the city's stance on it. The options that were presented to us is that they were going to do a street construction behind, and the street probably needs it. The option put out was that they wanted to try a concrete surface because of some of the water problems that they maybe have had there before, and they felt that it would maybe last longer, and they wanted to get one in to see the viability of the length of time that it might last, and they thought it would be a good test site because I guess it would be probably as, potentially as a good site to test because of the water that we have running the shoe there. Our main concern, of course, we're on the front end of our adventure at Waltz, and shutdown time. We still have access to the car wash and to our gas station from 1st Street and from Wilmer Avenue, but it basically shuts down our, half of our bays, and it shuts down our tunnel wash, which are a good percentage of our business. And so, what we were hoping, and Holly and Curly were very good about this too, I believe that they got another estimate if they decided to go with the concrete, and they've been out to the site, and we looked at doing the project in half and half so that we can at least still funnel traffic one way or the other out of our tunnel wash. As I said, our tunnel wash is a relatively large portion of our business, and if we're shut down for a longer length of time to do the concrete, it would be a detriment to our business. And so, we're hoping that the city will take that under advisement when they're looking at it, because we understand, you know, we're not disputing the assessment and we're not disputing our ability to, you know, come to the table and help pay for it. But what would be a hardship to us is if they decide to go concrete and they can't do it in phases, we feel that the length of time that we would have to be shut down would be greatly affect us.
Holly, can you address that? And, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we did meet with the owners of Waltz, and the alternate bid on the concrete does include phased construction. So, the intent is to, like we discussed, to keep it open as much as possible. Originally, we had discussed shutting Waltz down for about a week or so and putting some higher lien, but we did bid it as a phased construction, anticipating that we would have access out of their car wash during the majority of the construction period. The additional assessment on the concrete, or the additional cost on the concrete was about $3,000 more, and that includes the phased construction. At this time, my recommendation would not be to assess that to Waltz for the concrete piece, but for the city to, if they decide to go with the concrete, that would be at a city's cost to do so. So, we did address that.
As a trial basis, right?
What's that?
As a trial basis?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate the recommendation.
Richard.
Hi, my name's Richard Score. I have the Prescription Center property right across from Waltz. I kind of missed, I couldn't hear real well. Now, did you say if it was done in concrete, it would be picked up, how?
By the city.
By the city.
The additional cost between the bituminous. What I was proposing is that the additional cost between the bituminous and the concrete, which is about $3,000, the additional cost would be picked up by the city and not assessed to the property owners. The property owners would still be assessed at the $67.17 a foot, and that would not increase because of the concrete alternate.
I should have probably been sitting up here where the harder hearing people are sitting.[1204.41][1204.41](Laughter). He had me sitting on the bench and up in Little League that I didn't want to do it anymore. I've got a couple of concerns. Firstly, when I look at my assessment, I see that it is basically a fourth of the total cost when my property maybe takes up an eighth of the footage?
I don't know about that. That would be.
Is, can somebody help me with that?
I think Mr. Halliday can answer that. He's just looking for the paperwork.
We have 123, you can go by linear feet, Richard, and we have 123.5 feet on that commercial property.
But I'm looking, I look at total cost 31,771, and my cost is about $8,300. If you do the math for, because I've got someone, I'm only 1/4 of the one block for footage. So, I'm wondering why I'm paying, if you talk the next block down too, which I assume you're doing, why am I paying a quarter when I should be paying an eighth?
Because the calculation is totally different against that way. The calculation is based on the cost as bid divided by the assessable footage. So, yes, we're going way down a couple of blocks on Royce, but all classes of property are assessed by the same assessable rate, which is another reason we have to pick up the concrete. All commercial or all residential is assessed at that same rate.
But how does that work out to 31,770?
Because of the current policy on the residential properties to the west, they have addresses on 3rd Street or 4th Street, and they are, residential properties are exempt on their side street by their address and are assessed when their front streets are done.
Okay.
Commercial property, that is not true. They're assessed on all sides.
No, that's a good answer.
That's our current process. So, it's a linear footage of 123 times the rate.
Very good. No, that answers my question. One of the other questions I had, and I would probably be very well, I think the concrete is probably a good idea if it can hold up better than what we have. Waltz is a great business. I like all the guys who work there. But I've been concerned over, I've been involved with the Prescription Center property for about 25 years, actually, maybe longer, and I've seen the constant reconstruction of that street out there, and I can promise you it's not from my people coming in and out of my parking lot. It's from detergent, breaking down the street. I see constantly work being done by the city that indirectly I am paying for already. I've seen two trees die on my property on the boulevard. It was interesting that they died. If you would, you could draw a tangent from the side of the tree that started to die right over to the exit of the car wash. My concern is that I am paying, or that I will continue, that I am paying somewhat for damage that I am not doing, and I think the other people on those surrounding streets should be a little concerned also. So, I, that's another thing I'm looking at. Is this, is this amount, am I being charged a legitimate amount for what I'm doing to that street? If you understand me, my wear and tear. And I think Waltz is a great business. I like the guys who are there. It's been a great thing in Minnesota, in Wilmer. And I've just got some frustrations at expenses being picked up. I know when I get a big pile of snow at my business, I'm told by the city, get it out or else. When there's a big pile on Waltz Corner, I see city vehicles coming in and hauling it away. And I don't know what the answer is to that, but it's a little bit of frustration that's built up over the year at my expense versus seeing things being done for somebody else.
I don't run away. I want to call in a resident cement expert.
As far as what?
To answer the question as to the durability, because he's been asking quite a bit to try a spot of concrete because it wears better. Am I understanding that right?
I don't claim to be an expert on anything, but concrete is going to last longer than asphalt. The big benefit that asphalt has in Minnesota is it melts when the sun comes out in the wintertime. But if concrete is poured curb to curb, one piece, that was going to be one of my questions. Where things fail in Minnesota in wintertime is where there's cracks or where there's a place that moisture can get into. And if you can keep that out by having a solid piece, you have to have expansion joints, but any moisture gets down below or there's a crack in the asphalt, and that happens all the time in asphalt. Concrete is rebarred. It depends on how thick they pour it there. I don't know what ton road it's going to be, but it should last quite a bit longer, considerably longer. Just, it's one chunk and it doesn't move. Asphalt can go like this, just watching cars or trucks drive on it in the summertime in July. Concrete is one chunk, and it evens the weight out as you drive over, but.
Yeah, well, I think that answers, that pretty much answers my questions. I didn't, I was concerned about the, I didn't realize the side of the house is no cost. That's probably why people only put siding on the front of their houses.[1588.13][1588.13](Laughter). Maybe I should, maybe Ron should answer that question, too. But I'm a little concerned about equity of what's being paid for by who.
Yeah, I'll ask the, Mr. Score, I don't know the answer to that. Is that something that is taken into consideration?
Again, I can't guarantee that concrete's going to be the answer for that street, but if you look at where Waltz has done a concrete patch right at the exit of their drive-through car wash, the concrete has pretty much stayed in pretty good condition, and the asphalt around it is what is deteriorating. So, the idea is that if we do the entire street with concrete and tie it into the curbs, that it will hold up better than what the asphalt is. The second thing, point I wanted to make is we felt that this street was a good test site, I guess, for concrete, because there are no sanitary or water mains under the street, so there wouldn't be cutting in for water main breaks or sanitary sewer breaks, so it would be a nice, a good section to look at. We also did consult with the MinDOT Concrete Lab for their input on our design, and they gave us their blessing on that, so. And again, the assessment rate at 67.17 is the same assessment rate that all of the reconstruction street, reconstructed streets would be assessed at, so regardless of concrete or asphalt, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The short old guy votes for concrete.[1691.01][1691.01](Laughter).
Are there any other questions from the audience or comments? Would you come to the podium, please, and name an address?
I'm Dawn Roser. I'm the administrator at Wilmer Care Center along Russell Street, and I just want the city to keep in mind, we do have an emergency exit along that street that the EMTs use for residents when they need to be picked up. And as well, we received our notice last week that this assessment was happening. No one came and asked our opinion or anything like that, so I'm disappointed in that. That's all I have.
Do you have any comment to that, Holly?
My two comments would be, we can certainly work to accommodate the emergency services that are needed at the care center. Secondly, granted, yes, the assessment notices were probably mailed out not that long ago, but we have been moving through the process as we typically do with the improvement hearings and notices in the paper regarding the improvements and street projects coming forward. So, if that message was not relayed to the care center, I apologize for that, and I don't know if it got missed or if the process didn't follow through, or I guess I don't have a good answer for that.
Any further questions or comments about the street assessments? Go ahead. Would you come up to the podium, please? And your name and address?
My name is Michael Gillespie. I live at 310 Bernard Street. And I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, if there is any way that the city could help me pay for this assessment? Because I make about $12 an hour. That's all I make, actually. Is there any, any programs or anything like that I can get into or anything like that to help pay for this stuff?
If I may, I... Without indicating your age, the answer is no unless you qualify for a senior citizen. Excuse me. A senior citizen deferment of one or more of the owners qualifies at 65 years of age and older. Otherwise, it's just adder of full disability from a physician. Those two options are allowed to defer that against the property until that homesteaded property, if it is, changes hands, is bought, sold, whatever, and then it would be cleaned up then. But if you're under that age, there is no option. Just to spread it over the 10 years with one-tenth of the principal on the first year, with the higher interest, of course, with the principal balance to the last year, which is the lowest interest as each year is paid off.
What's the interest on that?
We anticipate after tonight, Doug is here to kind of tell us, but we expect it to be around, under 4%. We're not making any statements. We put 3.9 in the notice. We expect that to be accurate. There's a little bit above the sale of the bond for properties that aren't paid in full and so forth. If that is too high or set too high, then we send out a correcting notice at the end of the year. As we do anyway, we send out one October 1st as a reminder notice that those assessments are due in full if you don't want any interest charged to it on October 31st. And for people not having the cash to pay that, it just automatically goes to the county auditor and he spreads it over 10 years.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, would you like to come up again?
Absolutely. Yeah, I just felt in fairness to the city, I wanted to clarify that when we had the meeting with Holly, it was to determine, they were letting us know that they were thinking about putting the concrete in there. And so there was conversation on whether or not, how the concrete would affect us and whether it would be bituminous. And it wasn't a special meeting for letting us know that we were being assessed or anything. They just wanted to inform us of the choices that they were going to make.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing done, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, you can't close until you read your letter.
Oops.
It has to be put into the record.
I'm sorry. There we go. Wilmer Care Center, to whom it may concern. Wilmer Care Center located on parcel 95-820-0910. Received notice of the assessment and hearing for projects 1201-A and 1201-B recently. We, as a nursing facility and as a management group, oppose the assessment of $17,934.39 being proposed on the business occupying this parcel. Wilmer Care Center is a skilled nursing facility licensed for 52 beds with an average occupancy in the low 30s at all times. We believe the facility to be a strong asset to the city and the neighborhood as a provider of high-quality care to our elderly and infirm and a stable work environment and employer to over 60 individuals. Over the past decade, our industry has undergone major reform, including increased regulation and deep cuts in reimbursement. This places very numerous burdens on small healthcare providers. Because of these reasons, Wilmer Care Center is opposed to the assessment. Thank you for your time. And it's signed by Don, I don't know how to say the last name, Grosh. Wilmer Care Center, Wilmer, Minnesota.
Now you may close the hearing.
Now we close the hearing.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt again. As I interpret the statute, I think the council actually has to pass upon every objection that was raised to the assessments. Meaning you have to either decide to amend a specific assessment that was objected to or decide that there will be no amendments. And I would recommend you do that before closing the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, try to, could you read back the...
Well, that being said, then the matter's head up before the council like we always have. I guess if you want to go one by one, Mike Brown, Walts, Roy Savin, it was not really an objection. He's waiting to...
Excuse me. The only, the only, the only objection you would need to act upon is the Wilmer Care Center's, the one that's just been presented to you.
That's my understanding based on listening to the...
And I think that has been pretty much answered. Holly pretty much answered the, I don't know if it was her satisfaction or not. Yeah?
I would recommend no amendment then as a motion to the street assessment.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded that we make no amendments to the assessment. And we need a motion to, I'm sorry, we need to go into the, to close the public hearing.
You need to vote on that motion first and then you can close the public hearing.
Okay. That being said, all the, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. And now we will close the public, I'm sorry.
How different was Mr. Gillespie's objection from the Wilmer Care Center? He had basically the same objection, just he didn't put it in writing.
I didn't look, I don't know that Mr. Gillespie was objecting. He was asking if there was a assistance to pay for the, to pay for it.
There was no objection.
I don't know that he, I mean, I don't want to speak for Mr. Gillespie. He's here. I don't know that he was objecting to the, to the assessment as much as he was looking for some alternatives on payment.
That was my understanding of the comments during the public hearing, certainly.
Okay. Okay, so then the public hearing is closed and we turn it over to the council. There are discussions among the members here. What would you like to do with this? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'll make the motion that we adopt the assessment and award the contract to Dunn & Brothers Incorporated.
Second.
All rolled unless we're doing that.
Excuse me, Councilman...
There are two separate ones.
And if I may, Councilman Christensen, if you would make the motion to also include the concrete as the, as the choice of the two alternates, concrete or asphalt, for Royce Avenue?
As a separate motion?
You can include it in your original motion.
Okay, I will include that in the original motion. Am I right on that, Kevin?
I'm nothing. I think our bond requires us to adopt the assessment rule as prepared.
That's what I said. Separate resolution and then we're awarding the contract to Dunn with $3,000 added for concrete. I really think they need to be two. We're going to get...
So the "and" needs two separate motions? Your staff...
Let's go with all we have in the history because we know it works. Let's make, adopt assessment rule by resolution with no amendments.
Okay, I'll withdraw my original motion and make a motion to adopt the assessment rule with no amendments.
Second. Motion has been made to adopt the assessment rule with no amendments. Discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, that's for the property we're putting concrete in. Is there going to be more catch basins or grates in the gutter parts so the water is caught? From the cars coming from the car wash?
No, there is no additional storms who are planned for Royce Avenue as part of this project.
Okay. Will it be sloped so the water will stay on the south side of the curb and gutter then?
It'll drain the same way it does today.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilman Doc?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the lady from the Wilmer Care Center. And your emergency drive, could I ask you a question? How often is that used?
I would say on average possibly once, twice a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments or Councilman Amen?
Just a couple of questions on the concrete. Holly, is that 4,000-pound test concrete?
Yes, Mr. Amen, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. And is there reinforcing bar or what side is rebarred there or is it just mesh that's going to be used?
No, there is enforced rebar in there.
Okay. In that proposal, does it include the concrete sealer and the waterproofing agent that goes on top of that afterwards for water dispersion so it doesn't absorb into the concrete? Or is that an additional cost?
There is a joint sealer included.
A joint sealer after the concrete's poured, but there, is there anything after that that's put on for a water repellent?
No.
Okay. That, that might want to be, you might want to consider that with the amount of water. Because concrete still is porous and that might help preserve that street and make it a lot longer. You can do it on your driveways or any kind of concrete. That's something to probably consider, but we might be able to recoup that expense. It shouldn't be that hard. Maybe our city crew can do that afterwards, too.
We will, Mr. Amen, we'll take a look at that. Like I said, this is really our first stab at a concrete street. And so we were relying on the MinDOT experts to kind of review our design and we will discuss that and see what their...
Thank you.
...input is on that.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One additional comment on the concrete is if you have any doubts about it as you leave the building today, take a right and drive to the bridge between here and there. The concrete was laid in the 80s. In the 80s. And it's still in really good condition.
Thank you. Any further comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries. Next...
I'll also make the second motion awarding the contract to Dunn & Brothers Incorporated with the addition of concrete on the Royce.
Right. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to put concrete on the Royce addition. Do I state the $3,000?
Just the concrete is good. The price is what it is, I guess.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. This time, thank you, Holly, by the way. This time, we will go into the ordinance authorizing issuance of $1,460,000 general obligation improvement bonds from Springstead, I believe it is. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Doug Green of Springstead Incorporated. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening on behalf of Kathy Aho, who is not able to be here. What you have in front of you is a resolution that sets the date and time of the bond sale for these projects and for the 2011 improvement projects as well. We have a date of July 2nd at 10:00 a.m. At that time, we'll be taking bids on behalf of the city. We will verify those bids, make sure they conform to the bidding parameters that we've laid out. And we'll be contacting the city, Mr. Oken, to let him know the results of that and bringing those results to the council that evening for your consideration and approval. Just to give you an idea of what's the process between here and July 2nd, over the next month, we'll be finalizing the official statement. That's the big prospectus document that investors will use to make their investment decisions. We'll also be conducting a rating call with Moody's Investor Service with, I assume, you and possibly, and the administrator? Administrator, sorry. And Ms. Aho as well. And, you know, I expect everything just to go, to go very well with that rating call. The par amount on the bonds is $1,460,000. That might be a little bit more, less than, or different than what you've seen in the past. I believe when you discussed this project, this bond issue before is $1,555,000. And the difference there is that we count for the prepayments on the assessments that were received from 2011 projects. It's one of the benefits of borrowing for projects that are already completed. You know, the final project costs and you have those prepaid assessments. You can just apply, apply to the bonds, reduce the amount of the bonds. So that's the reason for that $95,000 change. It's probably looked familiar. We structure the bonds around the expected assessments to result in level annual levy requirement for the city. It paid off over 10 years, which is a very good amortization, rapid amortization. Make sure we're not pushing debt out into the future. We're expecting interest rates, everyone knows the interest rate environment's just incredibly low right now, for better or worse. Expecting interest rates over the 10 years of 1.78%. That will certainly change. You know, these were estimated on May 29th. You know, they would be different today. They'll be different on July 2nd. Certainly don't expect much to change between then and now, although the, you know, 10-year Treasury is at 152. So who knows what will happen? But again, no matter what, I think we'll still be in a very low interest rate environment. Just to prove, show that, what I, I think this graph was handed out before the meetings. I'm sorry, I don't have more copies. And we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on it. But what it is, is that top graph is the bond buyer index. This is really the, kind of the Dow Jones, the major indices for the municipal bond market. And it shows a five-year history with interest rates, you know, the bottom on the y-axis, 3.5% going up to 6.5%. The red line is general obligation bonds in the 20th year maturity for AA rated. So again, these interest rates could be a little bit higher because it's in the 20th year maturity and we're just, we're just going out 10 years. The blue dotted line is for revenue bonds, which we are not issuing. So if you just look at that, that red line, you'll see we are really at a low point over the last five years. And that just also happens to be a low point around the last 50 or 60 years as well. And then the second graph on the bottom of the page is the 10-year, 1-year, and then three-month treasury rates over the past five years. You can see that the same, the same patterns emerged with the short-term rates. Just the short-term bonds just hovering around 0% for the last, since, really since 2008. So that's the interest rate environment we're in, probably in for a while. Again, doesn't, it has its advantages and disadvantages, but for the purposes of financing infrastructure, it's certainly an advantage. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
First question I have is, did I open the public hearing?
I believe you did.
I guess you did, Sue.
Okay, thank you. I would open the hearing to the, to the audience if there are some questions or comments. Hearing done, I will turn it over to the, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. What would you like to do about it? Councilman Anderson?
I'll make a motion, but first I want to know, is this one motion or two? Because there's an "and" in there.
Two actions.
Thought I'd ask first. All right. I'll move that we adopt the ordinance and order the final publication.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance and to order the final publication. Roll call.
No discussion?
I don't know if there's discussion.
Not at those rates.
Then we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution...
And then, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of the GEO improvement bonds.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of the GEO improvement bonds. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. At this time, we will open the hearing on the full business subsidy tax abatement for the Lakeland Hotel Building. Mr. Goodman and Mr. Peterson, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanich, members of the council. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to consider the provision of tax abatement to the proposed rehabilitation of the Lakeland Hotel. The project was initiated when the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership requested city support of the project and tax abatement for the rehabilitation of the Lakeland Hotel Building. Rehab of the former hotel would be a significant step for the downtown. The cost to the city is low and results in stabilization, improved housing conditions, and a future increased tax base. Importantly, the project is consistent with the recently adopted Wilmer Downtown Plan. The cost to the city from this project is very low, estimated to average $4,000 per year for 15 years, and that ranges from approximately $2,100 in the first year of the abatement to $5300 in the 15th year of the abatement. This cost is more than offset by the increased tax revenue from the expiring abatements, which over that same timeframe will exceed $450,000. The only real alternatives to this project are to either do nothing or to seek another redevelopment proposal, and I don't think the likelihood of another developer coming along with the willingness and the ability to do that project is likely. Staff recommends of following three actions by the council. Number one, adoption of a resolution of support for the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership Lakeland Hotel Project. Secondly, adoption of a resolution that approves the 15-year tax abatement. And if those two resolutions are adopted, staff would recommend that the council passes a motion to approve a draft tax abatement agreement with the Lakeland Hotel Limited Partnership and authorizes the mayor and city administrator to execute a version of that agreement that would be substantially consistent and that incorporates the city attorney's revisions, if any. With that, I would stand for questions.
Don't go too far away. Do I have any questions or comments from the audience that would like to say something during the public hearing? Now is the time as compared to the public forum. Yes, I am. Why don't you come up to the podium?
Please come to the podium and provide your name and address.
My name is Chad. And I represent about 30 individuals that live there now at the Lakeland Hotel. And, you know, I don't really get into politics that much because I'm busy, but, you know, for us to dismiss some, I'm not a savvy investor, but for us to dismiss some things that I think are unfair is not right. Firstly, there's some comparative issues. I mean, the paper said that people in the past were given some tax abatements, namely the West Central Steel, Northern Factory Sales, Minnesota Technology Campus, and Gurley Foods. It's understandable, but, I mean, I don't think that rehabilitating a hotel is comparable, you know, because you're going to have a tax abatement and you're going to have, you know, workers that are going to work on this building for probably six months, but then it's over, you know? The tax abatement is, for the tax advantages of these, of those aforementioned companies are, it's a no-brainer, you know? It's a no-brainer. And, you know, they generate income and they generate jobs. But a hotel, I mean, it's a small building. It really is a small building. I live in Wilmer and I live in Minneapolis part-time, so, but I just had to give my two cents because, you know, and then some of the mentioning of its unappealing to today's renters is flat wrong because I've talked to everybody that lives there and it's quite appealing, you know? And essentially, it's unappealing to middle-income, upper-income people. Yes, it's unappealing, but to poor people that work, it's quite appealing. It's very appealing. It's highly appealing. And, you know, the economic times are tough and it seems to me it's more so appealing than, you know, I mean, I pay $250 a month. You know? You guys don't see what we go through. It's tough. And I see the money in it and I do want that hotel to be. It's difficult. I'm just getting inside myself, but, I mean, it's not just a cut-and-dry issue. It just, you know, there needs to be some people that, and yes, I'd like, I don't want to see the building go be decrepit and fall into disuse. I mean, it's got, I know a lot about that building because I lived there. I mean, there's a roof problem, but it's not falling apart, you know? I remodeled four homes by myself in Minneapolis and almost killed myself doing it. I know what buildings are when they fall apart. We remodeled a house that was built in 1890 in Minneapolis. This was built in 1927. It's a sound structure. It's built like a tank, you know? It's got some roof problems. It has some water heating issues, you know? Could go on. I don't want to waste any more time. I just feel like I need to say that. I thank you for your time. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chad. Any further comments? Come on up. Introduce yourself and...
My name is Dean Pearson. Thank you for allowing us to comment. I do not reside in the city of Wilmer, but I just want to talk from my heart because I really have a heart for this town. I live in Glenwood, but I was born here 57 years ago. And me and my sister were raised on the corner of Fourth and Litchfield, where the Lakeland is, because my mom worked two jobs in Litchfield Avenue and my dad worked down at the Northwestern Bell Building. And I want to disclose also that I am the neighbor to the Lakeland Building. I own what's called Heritage Square, the old theater building, the building that I've fixed up and I'm very proud of. I don't have anything, you know, sentacious or profound to say, but again, I just want to speak from my heart because I feel that what we're talking about here, it's not about me getting something good because I'm the neighbor, it's about Wilmer. This project isn't, I don't think it's about the Lakeland, I don't think it's about Wilmer. And let me explain what I mean by that. I work one day a week in Fargo and I work for a radio company. I spend one day a week in Alexandria. I also have a commercial building there. I spend two days a month in Morris, and I live in Glenwood, so I'm there a couple days a week. Now, all of those towns, I meet a lot of wonderful people and they say, "Well, Dean, what do you do?" And I say, "Well, I get around to saying that I spend one day a week in Wilmer." Right away, when I say that, they say, "Wow, Wilmer, that is just a, what a great bunch of people. What an awesome progressive town." And I'm very proud when they say that. But then this conversation then goes, "But man, why can't they do something about downtown?" And it's like every place I go and all the people in Minnesota that I meet, we have this thing downtown that we have to do something about, and here's a chance for us to really do something. When I first saw the deal at $3 million, I was just, wow! And I don't look at that as this company making an investment. I look at this as a gift. This is a $3 million gift to the city of Wilmer, and it's going to be the start of something really awesome. I personally feel if you vote against the abatement, it's like you're telling this company, which I know nothing about from Marshall, that you don't want this gift. I think it's going to be the start of something good. Now, when I first heard about this, I want to tell you what I did. The first thing I did when I heard about it was I called a stucco guy because the north side of my building looks horrible and that's what's going to face the Lakeland. I want my building to look good because this is going to be awesome. And I think that's going to happen to a lot of people when they see this happen. It inspires people to move forward. Now, I bought my building a year and a half ago. I paid $400,000 for it. And after I bought it, I put another $400,000 into it. Now, that's peanuts compared to this project, but I want to tell you what that did. I saw people change. I saw attitudes change. People continuously coming up to me saying, "Dean, thank you. Thank you so much for investing in Wilmer and downtown Wilmer. We love what you did." I never saw, heard a negative comment. If you're sitting here as a council member and you're concerned that somebody's going to come up to you and say, "Why did you give that tax abatement, yada, yada?", you're not going to get that. People in this town want downtown fixed up in any way possible. So with that being said, please vote for this, and I'm going to call it again, a gift to the city of Wilmer. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Sir, come on up and introduce yourself, please.
My name's Mary Cathery Wood, and I would like to read a statement on behalf of my husband, who can't be here tonight. Dear Mayor Yanich, City Council Members, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, so I've asked my wife to share with you my thoughts on the Lakeland Hotel. I am a downtown property owner, having an interest in part of Heritage Plaza. I am also a longtime supporter of the Barn Theater, and I was its president when the barn made its decision to remain in downtown Wilmer and buy its adjacent building to the north. Downtown is the premier focus of our community. Downtown property values and property taxes are dependent on its continued viability and livability. The newly updated downtown plan emphasizes the livability of downtown. I see the abatement of taxes to promote a $3 million plus renovation of the Lakeland Hotel into safe, decent housing as a good deal. A successful plan will raise the population of downtown, increase its business sales, raise property values, and yes, increase tax revenues. The thought of the alternative, a substandard building that could become abandoned, is a cost the city can ill afford to bear. Please support this project. Respectfully, David Moody.
Any further comments? Mr. Bonowitz?
I'm Bob Bonowitz, and I think that the city has a number of really significant opportunities in front of them. And I think it's a question of vision. What do you really want the city to look like in the next 20 years? About five years ago, I was asked to take a look at the west, well, at the time was the Regional Treatment Center because a company wanted to acquire it and put a technology campus out there. I thought, what a great idea. So after I had finished my analysis, made my presentation, they decided to acquire it, see what we have today. I think this Lakeland Hotel could be the cornerstone of a revitalized downtown. I think it's really significant and I would really wish that you would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Inge.
Richard Inge. I'm a business owner downtown and president of the Wilmer Design Center. At the strategic planning retreats for the last several years for the Wilmer Design Center, one initiative that's always come forward is more market-rate apartment housing units downtown. And this project is really the development of that over a series of years we input from a number of different people. The difficulty of doing housing and doing any development in downtown, it's a depressed economy. And you can look over the country, there's probably at least 1,000 communities the size of Wilmer, which had issues of a downtown like Wilmer, and they have turned it around. And the programs that the developer is proposing to use are tools that are used many, many, many times. One of the advantages, one of the problems in these downtowns is that for 60 years, there's primarily Band-Aids put on these buildings. They have not been really solved, all the problems to go on. So as you have more Band-Aids, they keep festering and there's more maintenance to keep them going. The advantage of the programs the developer is talking about is there's incentive to do construction right one time, make an investment, and get tax credits, and then try to design it and work it out so there's minimal maintenance over a longer period of time. This is exactly what a downtown area needs, that there's being improved development for a longer-term use. And this should stimulate other projects. This project is not the end. This is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's John Sullivan, 508 South D 13th Street. I am not against this project. I think downtown Wilmer needs to be revitalized, but the reason I'm here tonight is transparency between the city and the council and the citizens. I don't know how many people listened to the recordings on the committee meetings. I don't know how many of you councilmen were at the meeting last Thursday for the community development meeting. And if you weren't, if you listened to that recording. If you didn't, you should have. Mr. Yanich came up with some very insightful questions that I think, and he thought then needed to be answered for this to go forward. And I'm not discrediting the project at all. I'm just wondering how more apartments downtown are going to revitalize Main Street or downtown. The retail stores, yes. They definitely would if they put in a nice fancy downtown restaurant or something like that. But then you've got the parking problem for the people in the apartment, where they're going to park. They're going to park down at Vessel Church and then walk up to their apartment. And if you open up a nice retail store downtown, where you going to park? If you've got a nice restaurant and then people are going downtown to eat. I suppose you could do it over at the old bank parking lot and see if you can get away with it. But I just mainly want to say I want to thank Mayor Yanich and the members of the council that did push for recording all of the committee meetings. Because I really stressed for somebody to listen to that tape of that meeting. I think it's a real insight to Mr. Yanich, excuse me, Mr. Amen's questions he had about the whole project. It's lengthy, but it's good. He was very open about what he was feeling, and I think the committee listened to it. One of the questions Mr. Peterson said was, "What do the citizens know about it? They don't know anything about what we're doing." And because the comment was made that people have called me and told me that they're opposed to it or they have questions about it. Mr. Amen, Mr. Dockin both mentioned that, and so did Tim Johnson, who's not here now. But to say that the citizens don't understand taxation or what the city's doing, I mean, that's a put-down. So, but I just, think about the project a little and maybe if Mr. Amen brings these things back up, when you take it back to the council, think about what he said. If you listen to it, you already know it. If you didn't, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further comments or questions?
Mayor Yanich, members of the council. I'm Ken Warner, president of the Wilmer Lake City Chamber. And each of you should have received a letter that was sent to the Wilmer Design Center, a letter of support that we sent to them. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, to have this as part of the public And I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, to have this as part of the public record, because we think this is very important. And we have done, I think, our homework on this. We've been involved a lot with the downtown issue. Last month, in April, we asked Mr. Peterson to come into our board meeting and share with us the findings of the, of the study that was done and the report. My board was very receptive to that, engaged in that, and seen it as an opportunity to move our community forward. I've also had the opportunity the last four years to serve on the Urban Eyes and Restore Committee, that has worked a lot on getting some of the grants for the downtown area that we have recently seen have done some improvements in our downtown, that the local businesses have reinvested in downtown because that opportunity was there. And how we got to on this project is I actually got an email from Gary Geiger saying, "Does the chamber have a position on the Lakeland project?" And I said, "No, we don't. We haven't been asked." He says, "Well, I'm asking." Okay. So what we did is we invited Bedeorty, Richard Ingham, and Gary to come into their, to our board meeting and talk about this with us. I think the board was very interested to learn more about this. But when we were able to look at the numbers that are there, that this is a joint public-private partnership with an investment of over $3.5 million in our downtown, it's a relatively low investment by the city. The tax abatement that we've talked about starts at 2,000, ends at 5,000 is a very, very minimal investment in what could be the real building block for downtown. And as we talk about dollars, and I'm sure Mr. Renquist will talk about this, but when we look at the split, it's 84% is private and 16% is public, that's probably where we can get into a little debate because of the tax credits that happen there. But without those kind of things, these kind of things aren't going to happen. And we can talk about the adding to the, to the national debt or to the state debt, but the money is there. And other communities would utilize this money if they had the opportunity. We have the opportunity, and we should utilize it. Our board talked about this, and, and at the very end, they looked at me and said, "Why is this at our table? We usually don't get engaged in these kind of things." And I said, "Well, in, in talking to lots of different people, we felt that this has the potential to have some controversy attached to it because of the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership." And the Wilmer Design Center is asking the business community through the chamber to come out and endorse this and support the project, which we did do. But the question was really asked at our board meeting. If this proposal was being endorsed or brought to the council by ABC Housing Partnership of Any Town USA, would we be having this conversation or not? And my board came to the unanimous decision that we would not, that we would take these kind of things as an opportunity, or as Mr. Peterson says, a gift to invest in our community. A lot of communities would like to take advantage of an opportunity for us tonight. We are a regional center, and we need to start taking action like a regional center and leading this part of the state in our development. I also want to echo Mr. Peterson's comments. I hear the same thing in my travels too, is, "Wilmer, what a great town. A lot of good things going on, but boy, you sure got to do some work downtown." This is our opportunity to do that with minimal investment and a wonderful opportunity for the future. So on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Renquist.
Have to adjust the mic. I've always said that if I was going to, well, those of us with a military background always talk about who we'd want in the foxhole with us if we went to war. Jim, do what I'm talking about.
Steve, if I could interrupt you.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't know you here.
I'm sorry. Steve Renquist, Kansas City, Ojai County, City, Wilmer Economic Development Commission. I live at 3106 Eagle Ridge Drive West here in town. As a point of clarification, the Economic Development Commission's Operations Board has given me permission to work on this project, but the EDC itself has not taken a position on the project. Our governing board meets every three months, and the project has not come before them. So the EDC itself does not have a position. I've been given permission to work on it. Quickly back to Ken. Ken and I have worked together ever since I came to town. People with the military background talk about who they'd like in a foxhole with them. And the idea is, is I've always said I'd like Ken Warner in the foxhole with me if I ever had to go to war. And it's for two reasons. The first was is that I knew he had always had my back, no matter how thick the trouble got. And the second is his head would stick way out of the foxhole. I would just barely peer out, so. But what I want to talk about tonight quickly, and we've intentionally not trumped dozens and dozens of people by you, even though it's obvious that I, myself, and many others are, are for the project. The project comes down to, to a basic framing of the, of the, of the project, and two words or two phrases I'd like for the Wilmer City Council. The first is opportunity, and the second is risk management. I think, I'm not an elected official, but I've worked for elected officials for nearly 25 years now. And what seemed to me, the first thing that any time a decision comes before an elected official for the city of Wilmer, the first question would be is, "Is this good for the city of Wilmer? And can we afford it?" That gets into opportunity and gets into risk management. So what I would say to you is what we have in this project is we have the opportunity. Now, you've heard from a lot of people, so I'll try not to be overly redundant. But we have an opportunity. We've met since the early 80s. Many of you have heard me say this, but it's important to say it again, I think, about what should we do about downtown Wilmer? And in the end, nothing's ever really been done, and you get to see what happens through over 30 years of, of lack of, of real concerted effort, certainly not a city-organized effort in the downtown area. You see, and I appreciate the gentleman that stood up here, but you see buildings with $250 a month rents. And the, the direction that the downtown is going has, thanks goodness for Mr. Peterson and a few others, but realistically, has not been going in a positive direction. And we've seen a diminishment in the assessed valuation, and thus the property tax has paid in the, in the downtown area. So now we're talking opportunity cost, what could happen with Wilmer if we had more of a downtown and we had more going on in the downtown area? Not only would we see more businesses, which would mean more jobs, we hope to see more housing of a variety of different, of different natures in the downtown area. I understand everybody's got to have a place to live, and I understand that very much. And a lot of these, a lot of these people are workers, and not everybody can work at $30,000 plus, plus a year. And, and I understand all that very much. Spent four years working my way through college as a janitor, so I understand that very much. So what I, but what I'm here to say is we have a plan. The Wilmer Design Center has worked for years on developing a plan, and they've come up with a variety of different projects. It always needed that kickoff project. And the downtown is recently endorsed, or the city of Wilmer has recently endorsed a downtown improvement plan. So what we've seen is we have the opportunity before us, but many times we need something to initiate and to get that ball rolling. The Lakeland Hotel has long been, been the crown jewel of the downtown area and could be again. Those of us that went on the tour, and that was, many of us saw that it was, and the gentleman was correct, it's an incredibly well-built and structurally sound building. So there's really something to work with down there. We're very fortunate that we have a downtown that has many things that we can work with. Now, when we talk about risk management, okay, we usually talk about how do we protect our assets, our, the things that we have right now? How do we protect the city's treasury? How do we protect its tax valuation? So we take a look at the downtown, and we look, and we look at the risk management, what, what does it cost the city to participate in this? Remember how tax abatement works, and I don't mean to lecture, but the taxes have to be paid each year by the body that you grant the tax abatement to, and then they invoice the city and you pay them back. If that project goes bust, and for some reason, nobody's paying the taxes, the city pays no taxes back to that party. If we're talking about roughly $3,000 of present value the first year, you're talking about one, one, less than one one-thousandth of the value of that project is what the city would be putting into it. Yes, we're asking for maximum tax abatement for 15 years. Net present value is somewhere around $45,000. Extrapolate that out in many different ways, probably somewhere, an increase in taxes, somewhere in $60,000, $70,000 range. So it does have, I'm not saying that it doesn't have value, but when you, when you take a look at what the city of Wilmer can gain from this investment, your, your risk is tax abatement each year for 15 years. And when we take a look at some of the projects we've had in town, and I know that there's a certain amount of controversy about any project, Minwest Technology Campus. I was there at the start, and many of you were either in town or in your present positions now. Not everybody was in favor of that project. I can guarantee you, there were state officials, there were local county officials, there were city officials, there were citizens around the city that, that thought, "Oh, what a, what a waste of government money. They're giving too good of a deal to those people," any number of different things. Who's opposed to that project now when it's 350 jobs and probably going to double in the next few years? When we take a look, even no matter how you feel about, about Bushmills, $58 million project, Kansas City, Ojai County invested $5 million as a loan to that project. We do not ask about the construction costs or the, or the interest rates or any of the other questions. We made an investment in that project. This particular project for the city of Wilmer has a huge upside and very, very little risk. And I understand that you're the city council, and I understand you can look at a project anywhere that, from any angle that you wish. You can look at the total cost of the project and say it's too much, even though we've had extremely respected local company put together that cost. You could say, "I don't like the development fees," though we've got a company working with us that has did, has worked in 68 different communities and 38 counties in south and southwestern Minnesota, has did over 2,500 units and invested over $500 million using the same pro forma and development fees that they're using here in Wilmer, Minnesota. This isn't anything new. This isn't anything that's being sprung upon us. So if we want to look at this through a microscope, we certainly can. But I can tell you that this is a program that's been used repeatedly throughout the state of Minnesota, and it's a successful program. I think, I said it the other night, but it's true. When we take a look at our, at our downtown, Einstein said, "The definition of madness is to keep doing the same things over and over again and expecting a different result." Well, I think we have the opportunity to do things different in downtown Wilmer at a very minimal cost to the citizens of this community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? Go ahead, come on up, introduce yourself and name and address.
Name's Mike Hall, and I live at 302 Fourth Street, Apartment 304. I live in the building. And I rent actually two rooms. That was an upgrade, you know? What Wilmer needs is affordable housing for everyone, not just for the elite 20 who will be there when the 30 rooms are converted into 10 apartments. And that's really unfair, because people live there because rent's affordable. I pay $350 a month for my two rooms, and that's all-inclusive. People that share a bath, they don't mind because they're only paying $250. It's very appealing to people, and you can upgrade. There's rooms for $250, $300, $350, and then $450 if you want a corner apartment. And just to gut the insides is criminal. And this place, everybody, to make it these condos, you know, for six, seven, eight, 100, 1,000 a month, no one downtown can afford that. You know? I mean, if you want to submit it outside, great, but it's, it's a wonderful place. The communal kitchens on each floor are fantastic, being a converted hotel, because a dorm fridge and a microwave in your room really limits what you can do. And it's nice to have the common areas of the kitchen and the TV rooms to sit and talk to people and to cook your own food, and that's a real cost saver too. Because everyone that lives there are hard-working people, Muslim at Jenio, you know, the shining star of Wilmer. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm asking you not to demo the insides, that there's other uses for that money. Like I said, affordable housing for everyone.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further comments? Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. What do you wish to do? Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. I'll introduce a resolution for support of the project.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded for the support of the Lakeland Hotel Project Discussion. Question? Councilman Christensen?
Mr. Aman here.
Okay. Councilman Aman, did you have a question?
Well, support the project. That's the only issue, not the issue of the tax abatement, correct?
Well, that's, that's common.
That's the first one. I understand that. Just want to make sure.
How many resolutions is this? There's, there would be three resolutions.
There are three potential actions.
And state them again.
The first action is supporting the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership Lakeland Hotel Project. There's a second action to approve the 15-year tax abatement, and a third potential action to approve the draft tax abatement agreement with Lakeland Hotel Limited Partnership, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute a version of that that is consistent and incorporates the city attorney revisions.
Do you understand that?
And in that order?
In that order.
Glenn, I think we need to discuss it prior to the first resolution. And if I may.
Go right ahead, Councilman.
I've spent many, many hours analyzing this, trying to figure out what's right, what's wrong, and come down to the conclusion, as I've stated before, that government is about ideas and not about people. Some ideas are good, some are bad. Renovating the Lakeland Hotel, as you have proposed, is a good idea. It's a good idea. Putting 28 or 30 people, I guess, that live up there presently out in the streets somewhere, not knowing where they're going to go, and they like living there, is a bad idea. Funding it with tax abatement is a questionable idea, very questionable. We have to take tax abatement very, very seriously. And I believe it's, I asked Kevin prior to the meeting, if we had a policy on tax abatement, what, what is the council? And he says we don't. I think we have an unwritten one that we've used in the past, well, since I've been on the council 17 years, that states we will use tax abatement for local employers, businesses that will agree, that agree to enhance their business, expand their business, and hire employees at a certain wage rate over a certain period of time, as in Minwest, as in West Central Steel, as in Girly's. I forget the fourth one that was in the paper. We have something to gauge whether or not they're fulfilling their agreement on tax abatement. If they don't hire these employees, if they don't expand over a certain period of time, we can take the tax abatement away. The request for the Lakeland Hotel, from what I see, is for remodeling, renovation, upgrading. Here lies, here lies my problem. There's, there's many other stores downtown that need remodeling, upgrading. Are we going to set a precedent? Can they all come to the council and ask for a tax abatement? How about the landlord that owns 20 homes in Wilmer, and he rents them out? They're underwater, they aren't worth what they got them valued at. He wants to upgrade, remodel. How many of these are we going to get? I, I also say this for the county. The county's got the same situation, tax abatement. They're going to be requested that. I don't know if they have now or, or not, but we were told by our administrator... You know, we're, we're elected to take care of the purse strings of the city, and I'm telling you, I as an individual and as the city council, we're constantly bombarded by somebody trying to sell us something. It's either a product or an idea. Think about it. You listen to the radio, you watch TV, you read the paper, we're constantly being sold something. And I, I, I think the idea of using tax abatement for this project is not a good idea. I think it's a bad idea, and a $4,000 average per year is going to squash this, this project. Something is wrong. I looked at the pro forma, and if I'm not mistaken, it fails in the out years, 13, 17, 20 years, whatever I read in there, it fails. It doesn't meet its obligation. Which brings me to the bigger picture, the, that I think Ken referred to earlier, and as did Steve. The, the money is there, somebody's going to use it. Chunk of it comes from the federal government. We, we were told that 80, 84% is private, private developer funds or private investor funds coming into this project. Well, if you read about the low-income housing tax credit, it, it's that money, that $3 million plus, the first place that's supposed to go, it's headed for the federal treasury. It's headed for the federal treasury as income tax. So now it's diverted from the federal treasury, which is the big picture. I don't know how our country can afford this. I don't know, we're, we're broke. We're trillions of dollars in the hole, and we're broke. I don't know how we can afford this, even though you say the money is there. In 2008, the president's Economic Recovery Advisory Board, PERAB, did a study because of the 2007 crash. Here's what they estimated. They estimated that the low housing, low-income housing tax credit program throughout the country will cost the federal government from the years 2008 to 2017, that's 10 years. I'd like to ask anybody if they have an idea of what it's going to cost the federal government? How much will be diverted from the federal treasury? Anybody have an idea at all in here? It's $61 billion. $61 billion. I don't know how we can do this. We're broke, the money's there, somebody's going to use it. Again, I spent hours doing this, and I, I feel like I have to act like an attorney when I come prepared to the council meeting, because I have to state my case, and I don't like that. I don't like it at all, but I've been pressured into this, and I have gotten phone calls about, from constituents and at the coffee shops, you know, what are we doing? $3.6 million is a lot of money to put into a building. And I have to share Mike and Chad's comments about, I, we toured the hotel last week, Lakeland Hotel. I haven't been in there for, I don't know, since the late 70s probably, except when there was the House of Bamboo where they did in there. But the, the building is in excellent shape. It's, it's concrete floors, the walls, I think, are all cinder block, or, to go in and destroy that, destroy, or remodel it, that's why it's going to cost so much money. I think that the Lakeland Hotel is doing its job presently, housing 30-some people in there. It's more than 80% occupied. These people like it there, they can afford it there. For 250 bucks, you get your utilities, electric, sewer, water, heat. You even get a TV room. I don't know what channel they get, but they're probably limited. And as you saw from Mike and Chad, these people, they want to live there. I bet that they spend money downtown, too. 30 people. I bet they spend money downtown, and we're going to turn it into 10 rental units and three businesses, I believe, on the main floor. Now, these rental units, well, I did some numbers, and there's 13 units that's going to be divided into basically three businesses, 10, 10 rental units. And if you divide that, the $3.6 million into this, it's like 270-some thousand dollars per unit. Now, it's low-income housing tax credits that are funding this, but when I ask anybody, it's not low-income housing. It's called workforce housing. And that 270-some thousand dollars per unit, that isn't low-income, and that isn't workforce housing, believe me. That, that's an awful lot of money to spend on a, a building that's already doing its job. It's doing its job. It's housing low-income people, they spend their money downtown. I don't know how much you could remodel the exterior of that building, because it looks nice. It looks the way it did when I was going to high school in Willmar back in the 60s. I've got three pages of comments on here, but I'm not going to bore you with them. It's, I, I, the idea of the project is good, but I don't think the idea of tax abatement, I, I don't, I can't go for it, because we may be setting a precedent and opening ourselves up to whoever in the city that wants tax abatement to remodel their place, whether they be a nonprofit or a for-profit. I think we need to have something to gauge tax abatement by, and I believe it is number of employees that are added to that business, or an expansion of that business. I'll maybe add some comments later, but I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Councilman. I do have a question for you, though. What are the options? The option to do nothing, yes, if I, I have a question for you, Councilman. What, the option to do, to do nothing is not an option.
I guess I would disagree with you on that. I mean, the, the hotel is over 80% rented. Doing nothing saves 30 people their place to stay up there. It's affordable, they're going to spend money downtown. Well...
Another question I have to you, Councilman, is for how long?
It depends on who owns the building and what kind of shape they want to keep it Doing nothing is not going to do any harm. That building's been sitting there for, and rented out for, long before the bank took it back.
My point...
Long before the bank took it back.
Further discussion? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. You know, it's kind of surprising. I've spent a lot of time on this, too, and, and my conclusion is maybe a little bit different, maybe quite a bit different. But to this, this idea that doing nothing is an option, I, I just, I just can't even imagine doing nothing. If nothing is done, nothing is going to happen, and the condition is only going to get worse. It's a nice building. We were all there, we saw it. It's a nice building, it's got good bones. You know, tax abatement does need to be taken seriously, and I, and I have to agree that we've typically looked at it for industrial or business expansion. But, you know, we have to be creative, and we have to think for the future. We, we need to do something. This is just an outstanding opportunity to, to have a big investment in something downtown. And I'm, I don't quite understand why we're reluctant to take money from the government, you know? We had our hand in hand going to Washington DC, looking for money for the airport and for the wastewater treatment plant. And we, we're applying for grants all the time. So it's nothing new that, that we ask for money when, when it's out there and available, and this money has been available for a long time. It's not something that's, that's a new concept or idea, it's been out there for quite a while. The impact on, on the federal debt, yeah, certainly it's there, but I think we need to remember that they've deducted the total amount of tax credits that they're going to allow on an annual basis, and taking that off income coming in, so that's, that's been accounted for. So I, that's, that's, that's a discussion for another day. You know, we've done other things to try to, to improve our city. We've done TIF. TIF doesn't look like it's as an attractive arrangement now, but we've done that in the past, and we've done it for some housing. So with a really minimal, minimal city expense, I, I, I just can't imagine why we wouldn't want to encourage this to go forward, and I think we should all support it. You know, one of the, one of the obstacles that the southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership is going to have going forward is, as they go to other agencies and other groups, they're going to, they're going to try to get a gauge on these other groups, well, what's the community's support? What's the level of community support? And they need good support, and we're the most visible thing that they're going to have. So if we want this to happen, we should, we should go for this, and we should get a unanimous approval on this, so that they've got something solid to go forward with, and I just think it's great.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further, Councilman Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, for somebody to say that the building hasn't deteriorated over the last 40 years, you know, I was in that building, you know, 35, 40 years ago, when there was a business in the basement, there's businesses other places in there, and I will admit that, you know, I did have meals in the restaurant when it was House of Bamboo and the like, but it has been a few years since I've been in there, and to say it hasn't deteriorated in the last few years is a very big understatement. There is a lot of deterioration in that building. This needs a major renovation, which we're talking about. And I think that would, to pass up an opportunity like this, to have a building like this in downtown Willmar, and not make any improvements on it, and just let it deteriorate and fall apart over the next 50 years, which would stand there, and would be a great injustice to the, to the people in Willmar here. So, and we have this opportunity to restore the historic nature of the building, and I just, all I can see is good positives from this project. It would be a focal point for the whole downtown, the whole community, if the project is done properly. So I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion? Councilman Bagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm torn, because there are tenants there now, and it is their home. I just want to make sure that relocation costs cover their expenses for finding a new place. I think that's federal law, isn't it? And hopefully, they can find something, you know, in town that's affordable. My question is, you say it's going to be low-income housing there, is that going to be Section 8? It'll be, okay. Some of the tenants may have children, and you can't discriminate against them if they want to come there. And I don't know, living downtown is a place for young children. I don't know where they're going to play. They'll probably be running down the halls and out on the sidewalk. I don't know if there's a solution for that in your plan. But overall, I think it'd be...
Did you want to respond, Mr. Goodwin?
If you could come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Rick Goodiman, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, Slayton, Minnesota. I believe you asked a question about relocation. The property would be governed under the Uniform Relocation Act, and relocation benefits would be paid out to any tenants that are relocated.
Do you know what price range?
It's going to be based on their circumstances and the replacement housing that can be found in the community at the time. So there is a formula. It is governed by federal government.
Okay, so who pays for that? Then you?
That comes out of the development.
Okay.
Cost, yes.
All right. And then if children are in the complex?
We will be designing around that, that issue. You're right, we cannot discriminate, but we would obviously take that into consideration within the designs. So we'd be working with our architect and with the community.
So you might convert the basement into a game room?
We're thinking about common space, yes.
Common space. Okay.
But yes, that is, that is definitely an issue, as parking is an issue, which we've already talked to city staff about.
Okay. The new tenants, they might be on medical assistance, food stamps, heats, well, not heat, because heat would be provided?
That, that is correct. Heat would be provided in the building. The, the rents are set right now at the 50% rent levels, and then there would be some ability for Section 8 existing in the building as well. The income limitations are 60% area median income to qualify initially for the building, then their, their incomes can rise.
Okay, so it could be some Section 8 tenants?
Could be, yes. Depending on the availability of Section 8.
So how about police calls if there's disturbances there? How many calls per apartment would you allow?
We would take immediate action if anybody breaks an agreement within their lease to have eviction.
Okay, that's a guarantee then?
So if they break the lease and do unlawful acts, that would be a reason for eviction.
So that's, you're guaranteeing that?
Yes, I believe that's what's also going on at, at West Winds and Cardinals, which we own as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Dock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question, I guess, over the last number of months that I've gotten the most, I have no objections to upgrading the Lakeland Hotel building, but $3.6 million gives me pause and gives many citizens pause. It would be good, because I don't think I've ever seen a sheet that's been passed out that enumerates where that $3.6 million goes. And for this council member, who has spent 56 years of my life in this city, it's my I have to understand on behalf of the citizens that I represent, now I know that there's 119 people that have sent a letter in that say that they support that, but each of us represent about 2,200 citizens. We're accountable to them, and I plan to be accountable to them. And so I need to know where $3.6 million is going on this project specifically. I've never seen that document. I think I've said it often enough on the council since you've been the mayor. Information is power. Accurate information is very powerful when you're making a decision of this magnitude. I don't think we've seen that yet. And I do want to align myself with the comments of Councilmember Christiansen. I think he is exactly right. Right now, each individual in this country with the $15.7 trillion debt has about a $50,000 debt burden on us to take care of that. And so if you don't think we are going to add some, some more debt to this on projects like this, and to use the rationale that if we don't do it, someone else will, I'm not sure I align myself with that kind of thinking.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions, Councilman Anderson?
Let's remember, let's remember, the city's commitment and the city's cost in, in this $3.6 million project is about $60,000. So, and it's not like we're in terribly high finance here, that we need to, to have a great, big discussion on it. $60,000, that's it.
Councilman Arman?
Well, a couple of comments. Dennis, you know, you're, you're absolutely right. It's not a lot of, it's not a lot of money, and I support this project. I support the downtown. This is my ward. I love this community. I love everybody that works in it and plays in it and breathes in it. This is my home, and I'm also a councilperson, so I have this responsibility. And at previous meetings, I asked some questions, and I'm sure a lot of...
Councilman Omen?
Well, a couple of comments. Dennis, you're absolutely right. It's not a lot of money. And I support this project. I support the downtown. This is my ward. I love this community. I love everybody that works in it and plays in it and breathes in it. This is my home. And I'm also a councilperson, so I have this responsibility. And at previous meetings, I asked some questions and I'm sure a lot of them have been addressed here tonight by a lot of people, but then again, they really haven't been addressed because we don't know the cost breakdown. Mr. Goodman, you're here tonight and I appreciate you showing up because if somebody's going to come and ask for tax abatement or free taxation on a project, they should be public and they should be questioned. And I'm glad you're here tonight, so I appreciate that. Also, as a councilperson, we have to make decisions based on good judgment and what, well, I guess my question to you is what's your return on your investment? Mr. Goodman?
Councilman Omen, that's kind of a difficult question because the project is so awash in risk, which is why we're asking for the abatement. I know there's been some inferences to the development fee, and I'll talk about that at this point. Our development fee is $350,000, of which we're making an immediate equity contribution of $217,000, which leaves us a net of $133,000. On a $3.6 million project, that is three-point-seven percent of the project is the gross. So our return on investment is minimal. We're one of the few developers in the state who can take on a project like that, like this. And we're one of, probably the only nonprofit or even for-profit that would look at a project this small. This project is very minimal. It's very difficult to place the investment. It's very, very complicated and will require a lot of work on our behalf. So once we start this project, provided the council approves the abatement and we get the support we need to go to the state of Minnesota, we have a two-year jog to get this completed before it's placed in service. For doing that, we have to provide an operational guarantee, a development guarantee. We'll have to pay for our due diligence. We'll have to manage the development. And we'll also have to place the financial, with the financial investment, the processing and closing. We also incur a substantial amount of long-term risk. So Mr. Christiansen was right in that this project would tank in twenty-four years with the abatement. And that's provided everything goes well and we're able to increase the incremental rents by about two and a half percent. However, without abatement, the project tanks in year five to six. And the reason this project is in trouble right now in default of a mortgage is it's throwing less than $3,000 on an annual basis of net operating income. That's why it's in default. It can't even, it can barely support its minimal operational costs at this point. It certainly can't support any type of investment. So when we look at putting this project together, the only feasible way of doing this project is all with tax credit investment or with soft funds. It supports absolutely no debt against the project. So it will support debt for about the first three to four years and then it goes nowhere. So this project is highly risky and actually Steve asked me at one point that, did my board fully understand the risks with this project and why would they support that? And the reason my organization will support work like this is because we believe in downtown reinvestment. We believe in strengthening communities and we're willing to take a risk. The question is, will the council take a very minimal risk and hopefully it will turn the downtown around? And hopefully it will increase the revenue projections and the ability within the downtown to increase rents so this project can be ongoing more than twenty-four years, or we've made a very bad bet.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and I appreciate, you know, I just want to make one comment. Somebody spoke about if it was ABC Development coming in here, we'd be supportive of it. And you know what? As far as I'm concerned, it wouldn't make any difference. I'd be asking the same questions because that's my job. So I'm glad you're here. I don't care who the developer is, it just happens to be you. So please don't take these questions from any of us flatteringly. I appreciate what you have done and what you are doing for our state. One other question I had, as far as the, this is going to be set up as a limited partnership and who are going to be the owners or primary owners of the partnership or Lakeland Hotel or Lakeland something?
The ownership entity would be set up with a limited liability corporation of which the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership would be the sole member. We would then form a limited partnership with the investors who would come in for a period of fifteen years, of which they put their equity into the project and they have, they have certain conditions they have to meet for the period of fifteen years in order to get the tax credit equity. And then after fifteen years, they exit. So we, at that point, we would be the general managing partner of the project. We'd be the sole general partner. And then when the limits exit in year fifteen, probably year sixteen, we'd become the sole owners of the property.
You meaning...
Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership.
Okay. And I appreciate that. In a way, you're asking the citizens and us to take a big leap of faith into this project. Although it might be minimal financially, it's still a little leap forward and you take risks. And I understand taking risks. I've been doing it my whole life. Some of them are profitable, some are not. Sometimes you don't make as much of the work, if anything, on a project, but you try and you move forward, dust yourself off and you move forward again. But we are taking a big leap of faith and to help you in this project succeed, because that's what we ultimately want. We want this project to succeed and be here forever. We want that building to be maintained and restored. I understand that. I love the building. It looks beautiful. I love the structural integrity. I'm impressed with the craftsmanship, the tiger's teeth on the outside brickwork. It's just phenomenal. You don't see that anymore. And to reconstruct the building would cost a lot of money. And I understand that development costs are very high when it comes to renovation of old building because there's no insulation in there, according to Mr. Inge. And I talked with him briefly today on what other cost of the project was going to be ongoing and what you're going to be doing to it. But we have to see the return on our investment. And there's a question there, a skepticism, and I think that's our job to be skeptical and be really a little bit paranoid of projects when we don't see the return on investment that you're asking for. You're getting a return on investment of three-hundred-and-some thousand dollars for a fee to develop it.
Of which we have to put $216,000 back into the...
I understand that, yeah. And you're putting some money back into it. I'm not questioning it. But what does the city get? Hopefully, hopefully, we're going to get a lot of growth downtown. We're going to stimulate growth and it's going to keep on going and we're going to beautify our downtown. I understand that philosophy and I'm not opposed to the project. But what if it fails? How does that make us look? How do citizens feel about that? How can we make this succeed? And for that downtown area to succeed, we're addressing the wrong issues completely backwards. For your project to succeed with those three businesses in downtown, we are going to need parking. Without it, you're not going to stand a chance. You don't have the traffic flow. This has been ongoing for years and years and years downtown, since nineteen eighty, when I sat in the council, eighty-six. And I don't want to see you fail. So don't take this negatively. But with the abatement, approximately two percent is what it... If you were not asking the abatement from the city and the county, you're looking at scaling back the project approximately two percent, which is not much. Could you reduce that and not ask for the tax abatement and still beautify that building? It's a challenging question, but you're not looking at much. I mean, maybe delay certain portions or types of the project in different...
There appears to be a little confusion because we're not asking for the tax abatement to do the development. As I said, there is no debt against the property. We're not asking to support the debt because there is not. It's really for long-term operations that we're asking for the tax abatement. And it's because the returns and the revenue projections for the downtown as they exist now are so low. So we are taking a significant risk by doing this and trying to turn around the downtown. So the risk that you're talking about, if this fails, is you're going to have an upgraded building that's going to last a lot longer than it currently is. You won't have to demolish it as quickly.
I understand that.
And you won't have the continuing blight in your downtown further depressing the minimal economic returns that are expected right now in the downtown area. So it's a leap of faith any way you look at it.
Yes, it is.
And we're taking the biggest leap, not the city of Wilmer, not at all. You're almost convincing me that maybe we really shouldn't take this risk. Because we're asking for, you know, some long-term support from somebody.
Yeah. Well, again, you're here and I appreciate that. I really, I'm glad there's developers out there willing to take chances and we all do in life and I appreciate that.
Most developers want to take chance for a bigger return.
Yeah.
Or a return at all.
I understand that. Well, I guess the benefits, I just wrote some notes here, so apologize if I don't have it down in perfect dialogue, but some of the questions I had was, you know, the benefits to the project are speculative without the area of the parking issue. And I'd just like to know, do you agree with that?
We put it in our narrative that was provided to the council as one of the major issues with this development. We also have talked to the city. We understand that there's a plan in place to address some of the parking issues in the downtown.
Right, the study.
Yes. But we are also reducing the number of residents, if this goes forward, in the building, which will reduce some of the parking pressure as well.
The timeframe on this building, you know, I know things take time and you have to plan and you have to deal with a bunch of politicians and government, which you've worked with many times, I understand, through developments through the state. But the timeframe on this particular project, what's the essence of rush or what's your thoughts on that?
The tax credit application is due to the state of Minnesota June twelve. Without this, this project is not feasible. And the next round would be a year from now.
Okay. Is the, are they in threat? Is the state and federal government looking at changing or revising this?
The state of Minnesota is constantly changing their qualified allocation plan. Right now, this project has, I believe, sufficient points to be awarded on allocation of local housing tax credits. Next year, there is no guarantee.
Yeah, I understand. Have you ever been involved in a project? We talk about public-private partnership and I agree they can work together and help each other. Have you ever been involved with a city or community where the community buys shares in the development to maintain and put an obligation into that?
We have been involved not...
Other than the tax abatement I'm talking about.
So an ownership share?
Yes.
We have had guarantees from local and the government that have guaranteed operations within the commercial space. We have not had any formal ownership, although we have developed projects for local and the government that have owned and operated affordable housing using revenue bonds. We've also worked with communities to develop public housing, but not in a joint ownership share. But we would certainly welcome that in this case.
Well, that's my question. Again, I want this project to succeed. I don't want to be looked upon as making the bad choice and that's why I'm asking all these questions.
But with that, sir, would come all the guarantees, the operational guarantees, the development guarantees.
Yes, yes. Also, are you familiar with the project in Aberdeen, South Dakota, the hotel that was renovated there?
I am not.
The Alonso Hotel in Aberdeen. It's very similar to this, but there's ownership. You know, there's a return on the investment I'm speaking of with the citizens and with the city. What should help reduce the cost or the exposure to failure, the development? And that hasn't been discussed. It hasn't been researched. It hasn't been, the numbers haven't been crunched, the old term.
Well, we could crunch those numbers. We could look at the residential income stream and the commercial income stream and it would not produce much of a return on investment because your prevailing rents in the downtown are so low that it's hard to imagine that you could drive enough revenue to do the types of repairs that are necessary in the building in order to maintain it over the long term and have supportable rents that would support that kind of debt or return on investment.
Okay, I understand where you're coming from there, but it is possible if things were worked out mutually between you, the city and other entities to have even people invest in the project as far as ownership shares, similar to what you have with your limited partnership that you have going on right now.
It could if a lot of those investors are very passive and don't expect any return.
Yes, like an investment.
Like a long-term tax credit, yeah.
So the citizens or any investor or person in the city could say, I have $5,000 invested in this project because I believe in this project, I believe in the love of this city. That could be done.
That could be done.
Yeah. Well, you asked me about, I asked about the developer's fees, but the other issue I have, I guess, you know, this is the crown jewel. Somebody mentioned the crown jewel of downtown. I thought Elmquist Jewelers was kind of the crown jewel myself. I've spent a lot of money there. But I would like it to be the crown jewel of downtown. The issue before us is the small amount, Mr. Anderson, alluded to the question of the $3,000 a year and how we're going to make up for that and Jim Dacken and everybody else's concern, it's just the citizens' concern about the abatement process and how it works. Would you be opposed? Let's just say that this works out, okay, things are going good. In this agreement that we're about to discuss with you or move forward with, if the council votes that way, would you be opposed to reviewing your bottom line to see if you're in the black after three years so this abatement can't be continued or will be discontinued or reviewed or revised?
The...
Every two to three years?
The, I would not be opposed to that per se, but the, what the use of the abatement actually is, is to fund an operating reserve for the out years. So it should be in the black for the period of time that we're showing in the pro forma. And then when it starts going negative, we're feeding it from the operating reserve, which is what gets us to year twenty-four. Unless there is a very radical change downtown and the rental, the revenue stream starts increasing by about four percent per year, which is very difficult at this point to, you know, to prophesize what the downtown's going to do.
Yeah, you're right. It's speculative. It's a leap of faith again. I understand there's $400,000 grant that's going to be given by the state of Minnesota. Do you just give that to you or the HRA is working directly with the funds?
One of the sources of funds, which I did identify within the summary, is at $400,000, which is through Minnesota Housing and Finance Agency.
And that does not, that's a no-interest loan for, I believe, twenty-five years?
Thirty years.
Thirty years?
Yes.
And it, there's no interest and it has to be paid back proportionally each year, the same amount is...
It's not paid back at all because this project cannot support any debt.
Okay.
So the question is, can at some future point support the repayment of those soft debts? And that's an open question. Now, the equity would all be gone, but you're still going to have some residual debt.
And what's your depreciation schedule on the building, on the developer's cost?
We generally would use a standard residential thirty, or, yeah, thirty-year, twenty-eight-year.
Thirty-year depreciation. Another thing I asked at committee meeting as far as ownership of the building, you know, Mr. Peterson alluded to that it cannot be changed, the ownership of this project or the building cannot be changed without the approval of the city, is that correct? Or can it be transferred or changed without our approval?
It could be transferred or sold like any other property.
Like any property.
We could not, it's extremely difficult to sell the property within the fifteen-year investment period. You'd also have a thirty-year covenant that would be placed by the state of Minnesota maintaining the low rents.
Okay, so neither ship, neither ship or requires you to maintain that building or to hold on to it. You have the right to sell it without their approval either?
Well, yes and no. The Minnesota Housing Finance Agency does have covenants. They would have to be satisfied that the building would be operated as they funded it. Any modifications to it would have to be approved by ship if you were going to modify the building beyond the historic plan that was adopted for the building.
Okay. I can go on and on, but I see, I have a lot of questions, very intuitive. Thank you for your time. As far as the upstairs goes and the structural integrity of the house or the buildings or the apartments, I had a chance to talk with Mr. Inge and he gave me a lot of answers to the questions. I understand you're going to be recycling some of those doors and make it look similar, the aesthetics or historical preservation. I don't know if you have engineers or research historians who are going to come in to look for the original wallpaper, the painting or the colors that were used back then, or I don't know to what degree you're going to do this, or if you're just going to tear them apart and put in modern sheet rock metal stud walls and box cabinets and...
No, we will have to be sensitive to the original historic design as much as practical.
And what these, and that's my point, is we don't have, you probably don't have any idea just what the exact cost is going to be right now. This is all based on an estimate. So we don't know whether or not ship or the National Park Service and their... So we don't know whether or not shippo or the National Parks Service and their preservationists are going to come in here and dictate to you what you have to, have to do. And I believe they have the authority to do that to maintain the tax credits, is that correct?
They do. So we would provide a plan. We would rely on our architect, which is Inge and Architects, to help us in that matter. And in fact, on the grand apartments, which you did tour as well in Olivia, we did run into issues where shippo approved a certain design and the National Parks Service threw it out. So I had to go to Washington twice to get that plan approved. Things like, can you have the state of Minnesota change the fire code? No, we can't.
Maybe you'll be working with the historical preservation code rather than the international building code, I understand. My question to the council is, you know, how are we going to make up the $3,000 each year? Everybody keeps talking about reductions, reductions, reductions. We need to cut expenses and save money. Thank you very much, Mr. Goodman, appreciate your comments. You know, how are we going to make up the difference, the $3,000 a year? Needless to say, how is the county going to make up the difference? I would feel much more comfortable, and I'd like to just, you digest that question because I don't know personally where exactly it's going to come out of, whose budget. But it isn't a lot of money, but still it's money that's going to be taken out of something and spent someplace else. So again, I ask what the return on the investment is. I do agree very strongly with the abatement issues before that have been addressed with the former state hospital and all the other places in town. Thank God they were a success. It was a good decision made by the council and the mayor to do that and we've been fortunate to see a lot of jobs created. And that's another issue that I have is I really don't see the job growth there, Mr. Goodman. And I don't see the jobs other than the construction jobs. And the minor risk that you associate is very minimal with all the tax dollars that are helping support this project. The public good to be warranted on a pendulum, for me, is very difficult. This is probably the most difficult decision I've ever made in the council in four years. And I don't think we've really addressed the issue to do it correctly. And I want to do things right. I wonder if this couldn't be delayed until we get some other answers, see what partnerships you're willing to work with us on so we can move forward with the project. Because I am for preserving that building 100%. And I don't know if we've explored all those options and you talk about the timeframe. You know, I wish timing were better, but I can't really support this not knowing what all of my options are. They haven't been explored. It's really difficult for me and I think you'd feel the same way, just like when you go into an agreement, you want to make sure you're covered, just like you have when you've done your homework on the research and the cost of this project. But that building isn't going to fall down in one year. And I hope and pray the federal and state government doesn't change their tax credits. Because I'd like you to do this project, I really would. But right now, not knowing all those options, not knowing if we have the right to take back the tax abatement or the county, what kind of agreement? I don't think, it's not stipulated, I read it in the agreement. I haven't, I haven't seen anything that gives us the right to. And I don't know whether you're willing to. So all the questions really haven't been asked. I just want to be thorough. And if you have any other comments to help us out here, I'd appreciate it.
Steve Peterson, you're short of $3,000. You can put $1,000 a year on my building. I'm serious. And I know some other people might do the same thing.
I applaud you for that.
Councilman Peterson, can I ask you to address our Councilman Peterson? Mr. Peterson.
Can you address his question, Councilman Amon's question about the, where does the money come from, the $3,000? Because I know that there's some abatements that are expiring, am I right?
There are four abatements expiring over the next five years that will generate right about 30,000 plus per year back to the city that is currently being paid out to the companies that have the abatements. The, over the next 15 years, the net return to the city, if this abatement would be approved, is roughly $390,000 to the positive side. And there was a question also asked about sale of the building and whether or not they can sell the building.
Please do that, yeah.
Yeah, just the simple answer to that is that typically in the developer agreements or in the tax abatement agreements, it simply states that the developer has to seek the approval of the city council prior to executing a sale or transfer of ownership. So they can be sold, it just, the council has to make the decision that the purchasing party has a financial wherewithal to substantially complete the obligations of the developer.
Were there any other questions for the council? Councilman Peterson?
Just a couple, couple of closing remarks and comments. You know, will the council have to vote on this? And I like to vote on facts and it seems a lot of what we're hearing tonight is hope. We think it'll work. And I can't vote on those items thinking that it's going to work. We've already heard that. It's a very risky, very risky financial setup, very risky. It's so risky that $4,000 a year is going to kill it. That's pretty risky. I'll state some of the facts that I've jotted down here, just for everybody's to chew on. Fact, the tax abatement that was used in the past for permanent job creation, Midwest Girlie Foods, West Central Steel, Northern Factory Sales, did have to do with employees and hiring of them at a certain wage over a period of time and we can gauge whether they did or not. Fact, the Lakeland Hotel is currently 80% or better rented out from anywhere $250 to $450 a month. Fact, people that live there want to live there, they like it there, they spend money downtown. Fact, the developer's pro forma is an estimated anticipated, estimate of anticipated outcomes, not facts. It shows it failing in the out years. Fact, our city administrator told us that revenues are going to be flat for the current year and the coming years, even though we're going to put to bed in five years some of these other tax abatements. Fact, most new businesses that are opening in Womer are not choosing to locate downtown. Fact, downtown Womer has changed drastically since the 80s. Fact, this is a good one. The Lakeland Hotel is in excellent shape for being 84 years old. Regardless of what Councilman DeBleek said, I know houses and buildings that are 20 years old that have fallen apart. And I believe it, I believe the Lakeland Hotel can last another 100 years with proper care and a good roof. Fact, and it's been stated several times tonight, including by the Southwest Minnesota Housing Public Program Director, this financing package is risky. I would like to ask our city attorney if we're setting a precedence for allowing tax abatement for remodeling by going ahead with this project or by approving tax abatement, I should say. Are we setting a precedent here? Are we going to open ourselves up to, like I say, other stores downtown wanting tax abatement? Or somebody else in southwest Minnesota, say Best Buy, wants to put a new facade on their front? You know, can we say no to them?
Councilmember Christensen, the short answer is yes, the council is, it always retains the authority, the discretion to make those decisions. It's a policy decision. Any application for tax abatement presented to the city council will have to meet statutory criteria in order for the council even to be, to have the authority to approve it. Those criteria are reflected in the resolution that was before you. So if you were to approve that resolution, you'd be indicating that in your judgment, the, you can make the findings that the statute requires you to make. So that would be the framework for the council's consideration anytime an abatement application is presented to you.
Wouldn't it be wise for the council to have a policy to refer to so we don't have 10 people coming to us in the next six months asking for tax abatement for remodeling?
Yeah, I wouldn't dispute that.
Question from Mr. Peterson. Have we ever given a tax abatement for remodeling? Only?
The abatements that the city has granted in the past have been for what I would term economic development projects and I would not characterize them for remodeling. One abatement was simply to allow a company to transition its taxes from one facility to another facility as they grew so that they could spread out the impact over a number of years. Other times, it's been to offset the cost of expansions or facility additions. So in the case of Midwest, their abatement out there is simply to abate the portion of the taxes that are not, that are on buildings that do not qualify for the jobsy district or the jobsy zone and are unoccupied. So, you know, the council's pretty much gone the gamut on the way tax abatement has been offered.
Well, I voted on all of those tax abatements. The Midwest Girlie Foods, West Central Steel, and Northern Factory Sales, and those are no brainers. They were no brainers. I mean, it's just, they're moving forward, private funding, increase in employees. I can't say that this tax abatement is a no-brainer. And with that, I'll call for the question for the first resolution, which is?
The first resolution is supporting the Southwest Minnesota Housing Project. That would be the first resolution? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
There was a motion.
We've already got it.
There was a motion, a second. Councilmember Christensen called for the question.
Okay. Further discussion?
Can't, he called for the question.
All those, it's a roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
I will abstain till the next resolution.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Dockin.
Abstain.
Four ayes, zero nays, two abstentions.
The motion carries. Next is approving the 15-year tax abatement.
I'll introduce that resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 15-year tax abatement for the Southwest Minnesota Housing Project. Discussion? Roll call, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is for city, county?
City.
City. I know, they're going to be coming to the county, yeah. How about the school district?
School district is not involved, am I right?
For this one, it's not?
No, they are not. They have not sought us an abatement from the school district. It is before the city council tonight and I believe it is scheduled before the county commission at their meeting tomorrow.
Okay, and how about the HRA? Do they have to?
No, I believe, they do not have to do a separate.
And mid-Minnesota? No.
No.
So just county and city?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
I would like to add a fact to Mr. or Mr. Councilman Christensen's fact, list of facts. The fact is, is that this city council approved unanimously the downtown business plan. Now, does that mean with the exception of the Lakeland Hotel? I don't think so.
I would like to add a comment to that. If I may, Mr. Mayor. I voted for improving the downtown, the plan that was presented for us. In the future, we did not vote for any financing of it. That will come before us down the road and I'll have to think awful hard about the parts when they become financed. They have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and a long-range 15-year plan. I'm all for improving downtown. I don't think there's anyone in this room that isn't for improving downtown. For God's sakes, it needs to be improved. But when the time comes for us to fund it, and if you looked at their chart, 200,000 one year, 200,000, 150,000, 500,000, we'll decide then whether or not we're going to afford it. So yes, I'm for it, I voted for it, the downtown improvement plan and I think everybody in Womer is for, for improving downtown.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, again, I look at partnership and we had people in the audience saying they'd be willing to help with the $1,000 and I'd like to refer back to my previous comments about public-private partnership, you know. I'd be willing to throw $1,000 in the kitty too. I really would. I want this project to move forward. I want to see this guy succeed. I want the city to look good. We haven't explored all those options. I would feel much better if we could delay this and really do our homework and work with this guy to make it succeed. This is no guarantee of success. Without the parking being addressed, we are throwing the money out the door and taking a huge risk. Yes, I hope and pray it works out, but it's not secure and I feel uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable not knowing we are going to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Would you read the motion, please?
It is to approve the 15-year tax abatement.
That's it?
Do you want the, we can read the entire resolution if you wish.
Is it, is it the short part or is it just?
No, it is, it's the resolution that is attached.
You don't need to read the resolution, no. My vote is no.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
No.
Dockin?
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Three ayes, three nays.
Leaves it up to the, to the mayor.
It does?
But I would like a couple of answers to a couple of questions before I vote. The first question that I have is probably best answered either by Steve Renquist or Mr. Goodman. And that would be, what happens if this fails? Who's responsible?
I think Goodman should handle that.
The, as part of the project, the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership would have to provide development guarantees that the development would be completed as planned and as financed and operational guarantees over the course of the, through the 15 years. And then there's other covenants that are, would be put in place by the state of Minnesota that is operated in a fashion as agreed to. And besides that, the state of Minnesota would also conduct yearly inspections of the property. And if there's any Section 8 persons in there, the HRA would also conduct inspections.
I actually answered my second question and my first question. I will vote yes on that. As I, I support the 15-year tax abatement. And then the third one would be, would you read that to me again, Kevin?
A motion is needed here, not a resolution, but to approve the draft tax abatement agreement with the Lakeland Hotel Limited Partnership and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute a version substantially consistent therewith that incorporates the city attorney's revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to offer amendment to that, Mr. Mayor, that in that agreement, we, the city, have the right to review the performance of the project and reconsideration of the tax abatement process and two to three, every two to three years.
Can that amendment be?
Oh, it's substantial, yeah.
That would assume for a second.
What's that? It does, if it's there. We'll figure out what it is if we have a second, but that's, that is substantial. To review, I don't know what it means.
Well, to review the financial performance or the financial return on their investment or their financial gated loans are operating in the black and how much in the black, that's my just of the, of the motion. And if there is excessive, excessive revenue that's being created on behalf of the limited partnership that the council has the right to reconsider the abatement that is given to Mr. Goodman and the developers. I don't know if that's ever been done before, but it probably could be written if agreed upon.
upon by both parties.
We need to have that read back.
Well, we think we understand it. I don't think we can do that. I mean, once you say the 15-year, then we're going for it. That's part of the package that the state's approving.
The city attorney would need to review that to see if it's possible.
So, we almost need to write that down what you want, and that's rather huge. I'm thinking you're reverting what was just done.
We also have to determine if there's a second.
Well, I realize that, but you're reversing what you just did by subsequent review.
About what the mayor just did.
No, once the decision's done, the council has made the decision.
You know I set 'em up.
Uh-huh. I guess I have a concern with that, or what you're really asking there, because...
Well, you don't think it can be done? Excuse me.
I don't think we can go forward.
We have a second on the motion, there's no reason to discuss this. We're completely out of words.
I think, I think, first of all, we need to see if there's a second to that motion, or if the amendment would be accepted.
We need a second on the amendment.
We need a second on the amendment?
Well, I think that's what we need, and if you're not hearing one, then it's...
It dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Dies for lack of a second, 'cause I don't hear one. So, we go with the original?
To the original, approving draft, directing the draft of the tax abatement and having the mayor and the city attorney sign the document.
Discussion on that?
Oh, what did I say?
City attorney.
Ah, okay, city administrator, sign it.
Roll call.
Uh, we can do that? It's a simple motion, but I can do a roll call.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Do a roll call.
Comment. I'm sorry. Comment. We are supposed to protect the citizens of this community any way we can.
Are there anyone scheduled to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are none.
I can't believe I didn't get a second on that motion.
There's no one scheduled to speak, so we'll move on to the consideration of the
Mr. Goodman's even willing to do it. And we're not taking advantage of that?
resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute FAA land release
Where's our insurance policy? I'm serious.
letters regarding the former municipal airport property.
I'll send one, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. There is a map up on the screen that will show you where that phase one is.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen.
I don't care.
No.
Let's get it done.
It is everything in red.
Anderson.
Is there a third?
That's the least you've ever seen.
Aye.
Amen.
No.
Dawkin.
Go ahead.
No.
No, I, I think there has been a motion and a second.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
This is obviously a long time coming for the city.
Aye.
Three ayes, three nays.
I will vote yes again.
This is the first rela-, land release of the former airport property.
That concludes that, Mr. Mayor, of that subject.
It includes 90, includes the 90 acres that are shown there in red. It will allow us to go forward with the Wilmer Avenue connection and be quiet zone
Let's take a, I will break. Let's take a break. 10 minutes, let's gather back in here.
in, they will, they will be for 2013.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please.
The next phase is this phase in orange. All documentation has been submitted to the FAA for that phase, but we have not received that land release or notification that they have completed their review of that. Phase two is the necess, is what is necessary for the Western Interceptor to proceed, but this is a very good step for the city.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say one thing about that, and that is hallelujah.
And I would just also note that the resolution you're approving will allow the mayor and city administrator to execute the subsequent, the subsequent land releases as well, when those come.
But I think we, thank you is in order for our city administrators, Charlene Stevens and Bruce Peterson, our city planner, for all the hard work that they did.
Here, here.
To get this done.
Thank you.
So, with that, the, the motion has been made and seconded. Is that a resolution? I didn't even look.
Yes, sir.
It is a resolution.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Public Work Safety Committee report for May 29th. Councilmember Christensen, would you handle that?
I will handle it, although I was not at the meeting, but I will be more than happy to read the amendments. Item number one was the, had to do with the Community Christian School eighth grade earth science class presentation. This is for information only. A Mr. Green and his eighth grade earth science class of the Community Christian School gave a presentation to the committee containing infraday, information that they had collected from soil and water samples in three years of Ramblewood, from Ramblewood Sloop. They used technical equipment obtained through a grant. Soil was sampled at the surface level, six inches, and if accessible, 2.5 to 3 feet below the surface. They also recorded external data related to weather conditions in a specific location with GPS unit. The committee received the information and thanked the class for their efforts, stating that it would be interesting to use this data as a baseline for future years. Item number two had to do with approving an application for the HeartSafe community. Mr. Brad Hansen of the Wilmer Ambulance presented information related to the city applying to become a HeartSafe community. The program promotes community awareness for sudden cardiac arrest. Our city currently assists businesses with purchases of AEDs and CPR training, and it would be nice to be recognized for their efforts. The designation would identify Wilmer as a HeartSafe community and will allow the city to place signs at the entrances of the city. The program provides two signs, and any additional signs can be purchased for $35 each at a cost to our city. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the application for Wilmer to become a HeartSafe community and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of our city.
Thanks. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for Wilmer to become a HeartSafe community and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Is there a discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Item number three had the, was a consideration of more permits for fall than the city limits. The first one is at 612 Southwest 15th Street. We received an application from Maria Hernandez to keep 10 chickens in a cage behind her residence at 612 Southwest 15th Street. Staff spoke with the neighbors on both sides, received no objections, and therefore recommends approval. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to approve the fall permit at 612 Southwest 15th Street for a period of one year.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the fall permit at 612 Southwest 15th Street for a period of one year. Is there a discussion? Councilmember DeBleek?
I know we talked about this in the committee as well, but we don't have any policy, or we've been working on a policy to, as to whether or not we're gonna approve these fall agreements, or, or not, and we just kinda, what is it, this, the chief goes out and views people on each side of the residence, and if nobody complains, we approve the permit?
Correct. That is, that is our current, we do not have a, a policy limiting the numbers or stating those. I mean, we are working on that. This is, in the current situation, they're requested, we send the police department out to meet with the neighbors, and if there are no objections, we generally recommend approval of them.
I would, I would think we'd be more advised, or would ask the city attorney if we shouldn't put a moratorium on these permits until we have that policy completed.
Certainly an option for the council, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Well, I can only see we've got three this meeting, we had a couple the last meeting, and I think we're gonna just continue to see him grow the way we're approving him and looking at him, but I would think we would wanna have a, have a good, solid policy on how we're approving them and what we're approving. And without that policy in place, we're just gonna be haphazardly approving these permits.
If I may just clarify one point, that if you were to go in the direction of enacting a moratorium, that could not be applied to any permit applications received prior to the moratorium. But it's obviously an option for the council going forward.
Does that take a motion to?
Well, you'd need to act on, on these before you this evening, and then if Mr. DeBleek wants to make that recommendation separately, that can be done.
It would require an ordinance amendment, because you do have an ordinance right now allowing these permits to be issued.
For a one-year period.
The ordinance just, just allows, allows the permit. It does not give any guidelines on how the permit is issued. Is that correct?
I think, I think the words are, is that the pleasure of the council?
Councilman Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's probably many more out there that don't know they need a permit, and that's why these are happening. You know, there's chickens and fall in other people's neighborhoods presently, and I think maybe one or two of these was one of them. And each, each of them are gonna be, I don't know how we do a policy on it. I have no idea what policy you'd say, a number of chickens, maybe, or the size of the chicken coop, maybe that could be in there, but I think each situation's gonna be a little bit, little bit different, and it's gonna rely upon the neighbor's input. They either want them next door, or they don't. It may have to do with friendly neighbors, too.
I think all those items you brought up, Councilmember Christensen, should be part of the policy that should be looked at.
Sure.
Size of the coop, number of the birds, where they fit into the neighborhood, all those should be part of the policy before we approve any permits.
Chief, what do you do if they don't abide by the rule? If you deny their request, for example, deny their permit?
It's up to the, it's the council's ultimate decision to deny the permit. I did actually deny one of these permits, and that was based upon two neighbors, one on each side, that both indicated there was already problems with that neighbor for other pets, so that was the reason that the permit was denied on. Councilmember DeBleek brings up a lot of good questions that one has to consider. What happens if you have a neighbor that doesn't like you? Does that automatically mean then that you can't raise chickens because that neighbor decided you shouldn't be raising chickens, even though you haven't done anything different than anybody else you've issued a permit for? Unfortunately, for me, the ordinance that is in place is very vague. It's simply a denial or an approval, and I have been operating off of the context that I, we check with the neighbor on each side, and if we get no objections, then I go ahead and approve, as long as I can tell that the chickens aren't going to be running at large. That would be our biggest concern, and/or that they would be cared for properly. But there are, there are questions, the current ordinance, this is another situation where an ordinance exists that maybe doesn't fully meet all the questions that one would wanna ask or consider when approving or denying a permit.
Thank you.
I'll call for the question.
We have a motion and a second on the table.
Comment.
Can't. He called for the question.
Sorry.
Get a copy of the next one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
The second consideration for a fall permit had to do with 805 Southwest 11th Street. It was received from Carrie Hodapp. She wanted to keep three chickens at 805 Southwest 11th Street. She stated the fall would be kept in a fenced-in area outside of their yard by the road. When staff checked with neighbors, neither were in favor of the request stating that the other pets are allowed to run free in their backyards. Based on their comments, our chief felt that the request should be denied. Therefore, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce that motion, to deny the request for a fall permit at 805 Southwest 11th Street.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to deny the request for a fall permit at 612 Southwest 15th Street. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
The third request is for a home at 1001 Southwest 18th Street. It was received from Heather King to keep three chickens at her residence at 1001 Southwest 18th Street. The fall will be housed in an enclosed shed with a fenced outside area in the northeast corner of the backyard. One, excuse me, one neighbor was contacted and had no problem with the request. A motion was made, seconded and passed to approve of that fall permit. However, we did receive a, an email from the neighbor directly behind her, from a Mr. David Wenzel. He said that he was not contacted or about the chickens, and they would be in his backyard also. So, I am suggesting that we send this one back to the committee for further reveal, so we can speak to Mr. Wenzel, and he could not make the meeting tonight. He had a previous meeting, and I think it would help at least to talk to him before we approve or disapprove of this. So, I suggest sending it back to the committee.
Left on the table, or then send it back to the committee?
I don't know if we need a table, I'll just send it to the committee.
Send it to the committee?
Yeah. Is that a motion?
No.
No? Okay. Just do that. Item number four had to do with, excuse me, consideration of participation in the, towards zero-death grant. Why, something doesn't sound right there. Our chief presented a request for the Wilmer Police Department to participate in the TZD towards zero-death grant, which is obtained and managed by the Kennewai County Sheriff's Department and, and effect from October 2012 through September 2014, two-year grant. This grant allows the Wilmer Police Department to participate in multi-jurisdictional targeted traffic enforcement waves within the community and the surrounding area. In the past, this grant was better known as Safe and Sober. That's what I understand. And Wilmer has participated in it for the last 10 years. The participating agencies received money back for the officer's time spent enforcing traffic laws. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to grant permission to the Wilmer Police Department to participate with surrounding law enforcement agencies in the TZD grant obtained and managed by our Kennewai County Sheriff's Department.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to grant permission to the Wilmer Police Department to participate with surrounding law enforcement agencies in the towards zero-death grant obtained and managed by Kennewai County Sheriff's Department. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that motion passes.
Item number five was a consideration of participation in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant. Once again, our chief wifeless requested approval for the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and, if awarded, participate in a Federal Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant, which reimburses 50% of the cost to purchase bulletproof vests for our officers. This grant has been ongoing, in which the department has participated for more than 15 years now. Participation reduces the amount that would otherwise be incurred to maintain bulletproof vests for our officers. And once again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to grant permission to allow the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and participate in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant for the fiscal year 2012 bulletproof vest program.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to grant permission to allow the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and participate in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant for the fiscal year 2012 bulletproof vest program. Discussion.
Question. As far as these bulletproof vests go, is this, there's good veteran vests in everything that's made. Is this the best for the police officers?
Councilmember Amen, it is a Level 2 vest. Is it the best? No. A Level 3 is better. There's probably something more than that, but the officers have to be able to bend at the waist, and the thicker the vest gets, the more cumbersome it becomes, also the more heat that's generated underneath the vest. So, this is a standard... And that motion passes.
Item number five was a consideration of participation in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant. Once again, our chief wife requested approval for the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and if awarded, participate in a Federal Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant, which reimburses 50% of the cost to purchase bulletproof vests for our officers. This grant has been ongoing, in which the department has participated for more than 15 years now. Participation reduces the amount that would otherwise be incurred to maintain bulletproof vests for our officers. And once again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to grant permission to allow the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and participate in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant for the fiscal year 2012 bulletproof vest program.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to grant permission to allow the Wilmer Police Department to apply for and participate in the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant for the fiscal year 2012 bulletproof vest program. Discussion.
Question.
Ms. Mayor, as far as these bulletproof vests goes, is this, there's good veteran vests in everything that's made. Is this the best for the police officers?
Councilmember Amen, it is a Level 2 vest. Is it the best? No. A Level 3 is better. There's probably something more than that, but the officers have to be able to bend at the waist, and the thicker the vest gets, the more cumbersome it becomes, also the more heat that's generated underneath the vest. So this is a standard vest that is, protects the officer from the firearms that they carry with them, which is usually where the main threat level comes from.
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. I'm just curious, what do you do with the old bulletproof vests? They get recycled, or?
We've done a number of things in the past. We've used them out on the range to test them, to see if they would actually stop some of the bullets that we've shot for the last, these vests get replaced every five years, the last two times, which would actually take over a 10-year period of time. We have donated them to the military, and they're used over in Iraq and across seas. We thought that was a good place to send them.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a good way to use them.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Item number...
Okay, that motion carries.
Item number six, consideration of a policy to set fees for false alarms. Our fire chief, Calvin, presented to the committee with proposed policy to incorporate into a new ordinance for false alarms charges. The previous ordinance was rescinded as it was outdated due to current technology. Staff recommended a new ordinance be drafted based on this policy. The previous ordinance charged false alarm fees of $250 after five false alarms per fiscal year. The fire department is proposing a similar policy to be put into place on January 1, 2013, which would allow three false alarms per address per calendar year. After three, the $250 fee would be charged. An application for a fire alarm permit would also be required every three years at a cost of $30 for all UL-listed alarm systems. This permit would be a tool to the department, giving them information of key holders to contact in the event of a problem that is found on the premises. The committee discussed the false alarm policy as it was presented and concurred with staff with the exception of the fee charged. Some committee members felt the fee of $500 after three false alarms was more adequate as it costs the fire department a little over $2,000 for each false fire call. A motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion that directs staff to draft this ordinance with the city attorney for false alarms based on the policy drafted and a charge of $500 to be brought back to committee for review.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to draft, to direct staff to draft an ordinance with the city attorney for false alarms based on the policy drafted and a charge of $500 to be brought back to the committee for review. Discussion.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. This is strictly to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance that would come back to committee. This does not go into effect tonight, as some people, I guess, had thought in the public. So it's strictly for him to draft an ordinance that will come back to the committee. If passed by them, it'll come back to us for a hearing, the public can speak then.
And then it would likely not even be implemented until January of 2013.
Okay.
And I would ask our city council, does it make sense, or, sorry, our city attorney, does it make sense to have after three times in there? Because I don't see that in there.
Mr. Mayor, it's...
Again, it's just, you're just directing staff to draft that ordinance, and so that issue would get addressed in the ordinance.
In the ordinance.
I believe it's covered in the policy in paragraph 3A, but yes, that's certainly something that I would incorporate into the ordinance.
I've worked with staff to this point to help them figure out how to structure it so it
would be enforceable, so.
A motion has been made and seconded. Just a motion, I understand. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Our last item had to do with some miscellaneous items. One of our councilmen questioned the runoff of the new parking lot on the east side of the former Washington School Building, which was recently purchased by the affiliate of medical centers. Our public work director explained that during plan review, the contractor was required to divert as much runoff as possible into the grassy area. That was our last item, and there's some questions. I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee Report from May 29, 2012. Is there a discussion?
Just wondering if it would be in order to go back to the fall permits, if we could talk about the moratorium, or?
Let's do that.
Because you already have a motion to file these minutes.
Well, we will file the minutes and then...
Hasn't been voted on, so.
Doesn't matter.
Whatever you want to discuss.
Yeah, it's a separate...
You can approve the file, and it's a separate item.
Okay. So just a motion on that?
Motion to file is on the table.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mayor, about fall permits and, like, I think we need a policy on how to deal with those permits. I'd like to play some moratorium of, I don't know, 90 days on accepting new permits for fall.
A motion has been made and seconded to play some moratorium on the fall permits for 90 days. Discussion. Councilman Anderson.
In that 90 days, are we directing staff to come up with a policy? Is that what they're looking for?
That would be the intent, yeah.
Is that after part of the motion?
I'll word it just that way.
And direct staff to...
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that the motion actually read, to give direction to myself or staff to draft a moratorium ordinance for either the councils or committees' consideration, because you do have the ordinance in place right now that authorizes those permits. You would need to enact a moratorium ordinance to enforce the moratorium. So you have to do by ordinance what you've already done by ordinance.
Did you get that, Calvin?
I understand what he's saying. It's kind of some new direction we haven't done in the past, but I understand. We have a code, we have a municipal code with the fall permits in it.
They're an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this moratorium would need to be, have a hearing and be approved and...
Correct. It would need to go through the process, any ordinance would need to. I don't think that the circumstances would justify this being treated as an emergency ordinance, so it would need to go through the normal process.
Mr. Mayor, the only option here is, what we could do is just not vote on any fall permits and approve them until after some revisions came back and revised the ordinance. It's one option.
That makes...
The problem with doing that, though, Councilman Rollins, is we already set a precedence by approving some...
True.
Under the guideline, just asking a neighbor if they agree or disagree with it, so...
Good point.
So we have a precedence there. And I wasn't aware of the problem with the ordinance. We have to go through an ordinance process to place a moratorium there that creates a whole different...
Yes, because it's been done by ordinance, it has to be undone by ordinance.
May I suggest, since you have eight of them already, just direct staff to draft the policy, and until it changes, we'll continue with what we're doing now, and it's at a one-year permit anyway.
I'll second that.
So you'd have to rescind this motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second. It doesn't need to.
Okay, so where does that put us?
We'll continue as we are.
We'll draft.
And the staff, I mean, the staff will draft, they will work with the city attorney to draft revisions, but in the interim, the fall permits would come before you as they do now, and the council could choose to deny those.
No expense this way, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we need to have a motion to file the minutes?
We already have.
Concluded.
We did that.
Did.
Done.
Community Development Committee Report from May 31. Councilman Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one was public comments, and there were no public comments offered at this meeting. Item number two, the Lakeland Hotel Project for Information Only. Steve Renquist, EDC Director, presented information on federal tax incentives for historic building rehabilitation. It was noted that federal historic preservation tax credits are a public instrument sold to the private sector. The committee discussed whether historic tax credits should be considered as a private investment. It was suggested that if the city is going to participate in the hotel project, the project should be, should give something back to the city in exchange for the tax abatement. Staff suggested that the project was beneficial to the redevelopment of the central business district. Mr. Renquist offered his view of project benefits and stated that the project leverages private investment through public participation. Councilmember Amen asked for more information about project costs, qualifying developer expenses, developer fees, contracts, and agreements for tax credits. Item number three was the John Supper Club Building for Information Only. Staff presented a memo from the building official addressing progress on the John Supper Club Building. There has been very little activity as of late, and the project seems to have stalled. Item number four, city-county inspections for Information Only. City Administrator Charlene Stevens reiterated the history of the county approaching the city for assistance with building inspection services. City and county staff met and worked out a tentative agreement for limited assistance. City assistance will be primarily for plan review, with some inspections in adjacent townships. Sometime later this year, the city will evaluate its participation in the county's inspection program. Item number five, miscellaneous. Chair Dockin read a letter from the Builders Association regarding Building Code, International Residential Code, revisions, specifically fire sprinkler requirements for residential construction. The letter included a request that the city adopt a resolution supporting homeowners' choice relative to residential sprinkler systems. Councilmember DeBlick asked for more information from the fire chief, insurance agents, and ISO representative. A motion was made and by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember DeBlick, and passed for the following, to refer the matter to staff for review and consideration prior to the next legislative session.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Just a comment to answer Mr. or Councilman Blake's concern about the insurance to be evaluated on this particular item, insurance agents, like you mentioned. There is no savings for the homeowners to have a sprinkler system in their home, if that's your question. There is no cost savings in your reduction in your insurance policy to have a sprinkler system in your home. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, the item is referred to staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform you that publicly.
We don't know at this time, though. If insurance company wants the business, they'll put a reduction in there of the premium if you have your house sprinkling.
Yeah, we don't know that, though. Right now, everybody is, all insurance companies, and we've been in touch with the builders, so they will not be reducing their rates.
They're afraid of mold from the water. Be better to let it burn and have no mold. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a comment. I don't agree with referring it to staff until the next legislative session. I think we need to, I wish the letter was in our packet. I mean, I hoped that it would have been, so everybody could read it. It's very simple, it's a one-page resolution asking, you know, please, Mr. Dayton, sign this. It's been before him twice, and he's vetoed it twice, mostly because of the strong union members down there. They want to see the fire sprinklers put in, and let's give the homeowner a choice. It's going to cost, it's going to add anywhere from $4,000, we've heard, up to $19,000 for house per sprinkler system, and let's leave it up to the homeowner. You know, just leave it up to them, and it's very simple, and I wish the council would consider it sooner, pass the resolution, and send it down there. I think, I forget how many cities have already, 32 or 42 cities have already passed the resolution and sent it down there. The builders in this area, in our community, in the Kennewah County, don't get recognized for what they do. Now, I'm on my pedestal here, but, and I don't just speak for myself, but the builders of Kennewah County expand the tax base more than anybody else in here. We're building houses, developing properties, and this is a minor request, and I think it just makes common sense. Am I wrong, Steve? It's just common sense to let the homeowner make the decision. Let's not have it mandated. Listen, when they passed this, the International Building Code, they flew, they, fire chiefs, firemen flew into Minneapolis from all of the United States to vote on this. They flew people in to vote to pass it. I didn't think that was fair, and I think the builders need to be taken seriously on this. I mean, am I wrong? If I'm wrong, Steve, shut me up, but I would like to see this come before the council and pass this resolution as soon as we could. I think, it was at the committee being eager, so the chief has probably seen it. I don't know where he stands on it, but I disagree with this waiting till the next legislative session. I think it needs to be done now, along with other cities that are passing and sending their resolution in, and all quiet.
I have a question, Councilman. You know, Christiansen, if indeed this resolution was passed, would it allow for some insurance discount?
I don't follow your question. Would it allow for?
Would it allow an insurance discount? Like, Councilman Amen suggested that there wasn't any discount for...
Sprinklers.
For sprinklers in the homes.
There isn't.
So somebody's just going to spend $4,000 to $19,000?
If they want to.
If they want to.
Yeah, it's up to the homeowner. I mean, it's, well, what's it like? What kind of analogy? They tell us how many nails to put in every sheet. They tell us how many windows, how many square feet of windows. Oh, it's the homeowner, not the builder. They tell the homeowners, this, you got to have this, 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 and this, and this is one more thing that adds to the cost of it, and let the homeowner decide if he wants a sprinkler system. You know, don't force us to, the homeowner, to have it, so it's more for the homeowner than it is for us, but it helps us keep our costs down, if you follow me.
I do.
You certainly can, I mean, you can certainly refer it back to, you know, it's probably appropriate to refer it to Public Works, Public Safety, and that committee meets next week. You could do that if you wish to act on it sooner.
And maybe have it in our packet?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it, we can do it with, it only came to the committee, I mean, staff had not looked at it or reviewed it in any fashion, because it was read at the committee, and there was a desire by the council members that were present to have it reviewed by staff. It can be reviewed by staff and brought back to Public Works, Public Safety, which is probably the correct committee for it, and that would meet next week. I mean, that can be done, if that's the desire of the council.
Well, there's a motion on the table, and I...
Exactly.
I'm opposing it.
I think the motion is for the, going to staff.
So you need to vote on the motion that's on the table.
The motion on the table is what?
Is to refer it to staff for review and consideration prior to the next legislative session, but, which you can, we can certainly move that up.
So you're saying...
That is the cleaning service for the utility, the noise you're hearing.
So are we saying we could vote this motion down and make a different motion? Is that what you're suggesting?
You can do that, or again, the motion that is on the table is sufficient to bring it back even as early as next week. I mean, it really doesn't require a motion for something to be brought back to the committee.
Okay.
So we don't, so the next motion that we would need is file the minutes?
Yes. Unless there are further things to come before the council tonight, I would move to file these minutes.
Mr. Mayor, just one question and comment regarding the fire sprinkler system. I think it's, in a way, we all, we may have our prejudice on one thing or another, each individual in the council, unless particularly, as Councilman Christiansen and I happen to be businesspeople in the community, and we build homes, that we all each have an opinion on that. We all each have an opinion on that, and I think that, Ron, what should be done is we should not be bringing this matter forward. It should come through the Builders Association, address the council, or the committee, and I think it would be more palatable, so we can have a good discussion. Some people might look at this as prejudice on your side or my side.
The request was in a letter from Chad Copeland, who was president of the association presently.
And I would suggest, maybe for that reason, that it come before Public Works, Public Safety, rather than Community Development.
I'll abstain.
However, if you did that at Community Development, both you and Councilmember Amen would be abstaining, and there would only be two committee members, so it's, you know, again, a council can do as it wishes. My recommendation would be to have the Builders Association come before Public Works, Public Safety.
And that wouldn't take a motion?
I don't believe it takes a motion.
Are we out of order, or didn't we have... I don't know what you're going to do with it. Are you going to withdraw it, or are you having any decision on this motion?
I'll call for the question.
Just withdraw it.
And the question was?
And the question was?
You made, the motion was made just to refer the matter to staff for review and consideration prior to the next legislative session. It got a second. It can be voted on, it can be withdrawn, it can be anything, but it's just sitting here right now.
And I guess I would just respectfully suggest that prior to the next legislative session can encompass anything from this day forward until the next legislative session, so I don't think you need to make another motion. But I do understand the direction that the council would like to see this sooner rather than later, and we can do that.
Okay, we have had discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, unless there are further items to come before the council tonight, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for May 31st, 2012. Discussion?
Just a question. Is that a new rule, new code, starting this year for fire sprinklers?
It's in the International Building Code. The state has the right to take it out of our code. And how many states have done it, Steve? I mean, there's, the majority of them have.
But they aren't enforcing it yet.
No, no. It would be in the new 2013 or 14, I forget which one. I mean, they're, right now, we're going by the what code? The 2008 or '09? I mean, they're so far behind that they make a new code, and they say we're going to implement it June 1st, while two years later, June 1st, they implement it, because they keep changing. We got a mechanical code, an engineering code, plumbing code, we got so many codes that we're overregulated.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the preliminary plant for the Fair Acre Edition. Bruce, would you like to discuss those with us?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. Fair Acre Edition is an 11-lot plat, Zone R1. It's on Southwest 15th Street. The developer, Don Williamson, has proposed this plat with a private street and private cul-de-sac. The planned unit development was approved by the planning commission for the inclusion of the private street. All utilities inside the plat, once they leave the right-of-way of 15th Street, will be private, but the plans have to be submitted for review and approval by the city engineer's department. With that condition, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to, for the approval of the preliminary plant, of the Fair Acre Edition preliminary plant. Discussion.
So what do they do with their stormwater, then? Is it staying on the lots?
Their stormwater issues will all have to be addressed on site.
On each lot?
Or collectively. They could have a regional pond, or, that will be part of the review by the city engineer prior to final plat approval.
A few years ago, he was proposing this, and it was going to be, all the water would go, stay on the lot, wasn't it?
Yeah, they're going to collect it in the street with some system. They have not decided exactly how they're going to do it. That could be an option. Again, because it is a private street, they would have the ability to do the continuous rain garden as a median type, one option. They could have underground storage as a second option. Those are some things that the developer is exploring and will work out with the engineering department.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Help me understand, all utilities will be private. What does that mean? They're not going to use the rural municipal utilities, or?
No, I should explain that better, Councilmember Anderson. Once the sewer and water lines leave the right-of-way of 15th Street, they will no longer be public utilities. They will be private lines feeding the plat. So the city municipal utilities will assume no maintenance responsibility for those, for that system.
Further discussion? Councilman DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue with the private street, and that means there's no maintenance done by the city or plowing of it at all, and is there any standards the street is constructed to, given that it's a private street?
That is the reason that all the construction plans have to be submitted to the engineering department. Private streets have a way of becoming public streets down the road, and that's what, that's a bad phrase, "down the road," in the future, and it's incumbent upon the city to make sure that they are constructed to our standards. They have a little bit narrower right-of-way than we typically require. That in and of itself is inconsequential.
Does that also carry through with, like, Councilman Anderson's question about the utilities? Are they constructed at the same standard the city would put in? And how about...
That will be a requirement, absolutely.
How about water lines for fire protection in that area?
That will all, they'll have to meet the same spacing requirements under the code as a public street.
The same water main sizes for fire protection?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard this some years ago, right? One similar to this. And so what's different now than, did we, did he pull it, or did we turn it down? I don't remember.
The preliminary plat was approved a couple of years ago. It was similar to this, not exactly like it. At the time, the property owner had some concerns about the impact of neighboring development on this property. He no longer has those concerns. He's seen the way the West Winds project has built out, and does not see that as an issue.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And the next plat, Bruce?
The next plat is Valleyview Court Second Edition, and this is a plat proposed by Anjali Dahia. He's requested to subdivide a single lot into two lots to build a twin home. Valleyview Court is a development that consists primarily of twin homes, so the subdivision of the large single-family lot into a twin, into two twin-home lots is very consistent with the rest of the development in that neighborhood. Again, it was originally approved for a single-family home in the year 2000, but the conditional use permit was approved by the planning commission that would allow a twin home on the property. It's simply increasing the density of this development by one unit, and it still falls well within the maximum density allowed by our zoning ordinance. It's a recommendation of staff that the council approve the preliminary plat.
Will be approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat of the Valleyview Court Second Edition. Question? Councilman Armel?
Yes, thank you. Bruce, what's, is the setback between those properties 10 feet, standard setbacks?
Within a PUD, the internal setbacks are frequently adjusted downward from the 10 feet. Now, you'll notice the east setback on the side yard of Lot 2 is 10 feet. The other one is 5 feet. And our ordinance requires that the exterior perimeter setbacks meet the ordinance requirements, but gives the planning commission and developer the authority to negotiate reduced setbacks within, on interior setbacks. So, under the terms of our zoning ordinance, all setbacks are met.
So the easement, then, is going to be on the opposite side on Lot 2, correct?
Yes.
Special easement, all right. That still meets the 30-foot setback requirements, or that's not a requirement in a planned unit development?
Right, it's not a requirement in the PUD.
And as far as the watershed area, the water, stormwater issue, where is that being addressed in here?
That was addressed when the developer did the original plat. This lot was included in the original plat, so all those issues were addressed about 12 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And on the third plat?
This is kind of an unusual one, because we're not subdividing property, we're actually combining three parcels into one property. This is property owned by Ron Minky at the intersection of 1st Street and 28th Avenue Southwest, and he simply wants his three parcels combined into one tax parcel, because there's two platted outlots that are unavailable at this time, and it just makes it a lot cleaner for him to deal with one, one large parcel. That being said, staff would recommend approval of the preliminary and the final plat for this particular request, simply because it's non-controversial, and it's taking existing properties and combining them into one, so there are really no subdivision issues to deal with.
I'm moved to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion and, has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary and the final plat of the Minky Edition. Discussion. Councilman Dockin?
So, does he have to do anything for stormwater, now that the lot is over an acre? Or does he hook into the ditch there, or that holding pond?
His property was developed pre-existing to the stormwater ordinance, so simply by combining the parcels, he does not have to make any accommodations for stormwater. There's no increase in discharge or anything, simply by combining the three parcels, so if in the future anything was done on that property, and it was done to disturb more than one acre, then he would have to address stormwater issues.
So he would add on, or?
Correct.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We're at the announcement of council meeting, council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson?
Commandments committee will meet Monday, the 11th, at 4:45.
And Councilman Armel?
I haven't heard from LALS or nothing in the arbitrary.
No.
No meeting scheduled, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Christiansen, do you know of any that are scheduled?
Are we going to have a Public Works meeting?
It would be June 12th, yes.
Next Tuesday, the 12th of June, at 4:45.
And Councilman Dockin?
The 14th at 4:45.
And under miscellaneous, Councilman Armel would like to share a couple of things?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to refer back to staff and to the appropriate committee is, regarding the issue that we have tonight on tax abatement and the decisions and the policy that was made, I was going to bring this up, not knowing what the outcome was going to be, one way or another, and that is, when you said establish a written policy for that, some of what we have, dealing with historical preservation and the use of tax credits and tax abatement or tax deferment, we have some of those policies in shape, but we should also, at the same time, so we don't burden the staff and burden ourselves with all this research that is somewhat different to us, we should somehow be informed and have a lot of these questions answered before we get into this discussion and before it goes into committee, just to make things roll a little bit smoother. And I think this is an opportunity for us, after seeing what happened tonight, that we may be able to get rid of some of that fluff and some ill thoughts prior to the decision being made to even come before the committee and support the project. So I'd like to have that information brought forward a lot earlier, and that would be part of the developers' cost. Anyway, I'd like to refer to committee, Mr. Mayor, that's my intent or my thought. It doesn't need a motion, I just was...
Did you have something else that you wanted?
No, that was the only issue, because he wants me to go on.
So I have a final comment. What we witnessed tonight was GIA, Government in Action. With that, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Has been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned.